So, let me start by, I would like to open the Berlin-Boylston Regional Transition School Committee. Call it to order. What I'd like to start with quickly is just a couple of comments. First, I want to obviously thank everybody for joining this evening. I think it's important that we all play a role and have the ability to listen and understand the plans that will be presented tonight. I specifically want to thank, obviously, the superintendent Zay in the administrative team, who has been working tirelessly over the summer to put together these plans through vacations and through months that typically we're not used to spending that much time. So I want to thank them specifically for all their hard work. I want to thank as well the teacher volunteers who volunteered for the subcommittees from the different buildings, from each of the buildings. I want to thank the parent volunteers who joined the parent subcommittee and helped play a role in providing feedback for the plans. I also want to thank all of those groups of people for their continued feedback regardless of an individual stance or plans that are being presented. I think the feedback from everybody who participates is really important. I want to thank everybody for that feedback and continue to encourage people to provide feedback and to participate in this terrific community that we have. And I strongly believe that we, as a community, all have the same goal in mind, which is providing the best education possible for our students in doing that, and so in the safest and healthiest way for our teachers and students and anyone involved in the day-to-day operations of our district. So I really want to thank all those people. You know, I appreciate everybody's patience. You know, I know everybody gets uncomfortable and waits, has been waiting for this information. You know, where it's very important, right? We're voting, we're discussing plans and talking about plans that, you know, chances are will change throughout the year and impact the education in everybody's lives throughout this year. And, you know, and we all need to be flexible. We all need to prepare for all of the options that will be presented to us. There are going to be many variables, regardless of plans and recommendations. You know, there's some variables in this whole situation that no one here can control, and that's going to change throughout the year. And we need to all be prepared to operate in that manner and doing what's right and, and, and obviously in the safest manner for everybody. So with that being said, I appreciate from the community, everybody joining as well, all our parents and community members that have joined. I know I posted a few things out to the community asking folks to allow the school committee this evening to have an opportunity to listen to Jeff's plans and the administration's plans, let them walk through it, allow us as a school committee to discuss, and allow you as a community to listen, gain the knowledge, and then gather your thoughts and provide feedback in a very efficient manner so that we can, it's important to us that we get that feedback from the community. We want to do that in a manner that makes that makes the most sense for everybody in getting to an end goal. So I appreciate that from all that. So we won't be, like I mentioned, we, you know, in my public comments, we won't be having public discussions this evening, but we will be allowing, obviously, for areas of feedback, and I'll talk about that in a minute. We will be allowing areas for feedback and interaction and making sure that everybody's feelings and concerns are recognized and addressed and gotten to the right place when we, when we get to a point where we vote. With that being said, I did say we weren't going to do public comments, but in the effort and in the idea of continuing and working together as a community, as a whole, the district, the teachers, the parents, our teachers union, the BBEA, has requested and asked that they be allowed to come on and make a statement this evening at the beginning of our meeting. I absolutely think that is an important thing, is there, they're a major role in this, obviously, you know, this next and upcoming year. So I think it's important that we allow them to make their statements. So as chair, I'm going to, I'm going to let, allow that to happen. So I believe Tara Koziac from BES is prepared to make a statement on behalf of BBA.
Hi. First of all, I want to thank the board for allowing us to be heard tonight. So on behalf of the whole Boylston, Boylston, Boylston-Berlin Educators Association, we have a letter that I'm going to read. I will later then share it with you digitally. Dear School Committee Members, District Administration, and Community Members, The Members of the Berlin-Boylston Educators Association desire more than anything to return back to our schools and classrooms doing what we love, which is educating and supporting the social emotional well-being of the students of Berlin and Boylston. As teaching professionals, we miss our classrooms and the rewards that teaching and interacting with our students bring every day. Due to the COVID-19 global pandemic, every aspect of how we teach has been impacted. And therefore, we have continued to adjust our practices in a multitude of ways to meet the needs of our students and families. As a group of passionate educators, we firmly believe that safety in our schools has to be our first priority for a successful reopening for the, for all. We have extensively investigated ways to safely open schools by consulting the following: the CDC's recommendations, suggestions from the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Boylston Board of Health Input and Feedback, the plans of other districts, scientific research, medical data, and school reopening trends across our country. Instead of feeling optimistic about reopening our district in full, we see multiple concerning warning signs. Because the data contraindicates a full reopening, it is our position that we reopen our district with a phased approach, one which mirrors the way in which the state has approached reopening. This would include a full remote start followed by a true hybrid model, one limiting the number of people in the buildings, and finally, a return to a new normal. The timeline of these phases should be based on science and data, just as Governor Baker has been using data, not dates. Furthermore, we'd like the community to understand that any in-person learning will not look or feel as it has in the past. Most assume the only difference will be the presence of masks and the practice of social distancing. However, those are minor changes to school routines in comparison to how teaching and learning will be impacted. These changes will include, but are not limited to, a lack of group work and cooperative learning, inability to share supplies, materials, and manipulatives, a drastic change in daily teacher interactions with their students, such as comforting, tying shoes, face-to-face encouragement, et cetera. One-to-one help, there'll be a discontinuation of most hands-on science labs and activities, not to mention a drastic reduction in opportunities to build community and interact with peers, such as having to spend lunch and recess six feet apart. Additionally, time on learning will be greatly influenced by the unavoidable amount of time spent cleaning, hand washing, and taking mask breaks. We also have concerns about the social emotional well-being of our students as well as our faculty and staff. In the face of a full reopening without using a phased approach, we believe that the changes that the students will encounter will do more harm than good. We would go as far as to say that for some of our students, it could be a traumatic experience. The schools that our students and staff both know and love not currently exist and will not until the pandemic is behind us. A phased approach in which a true hybrid plan in part will help to acclimate both students and staff to the new realities of school. Additionally, a phased approach would provide a more consistent learning routine for students, reducing the possibility of bouncing back and forth between learning models. For all these reasons, the Berlin-Boylston Educators Association strongly recommends a phased reentry plan to open our schools in a few short weeks. Therefore, we request that the school committee support us in advocating for such an approach. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Sincerely, the Berlin-Boylston Educators Association.
Thank you, Tara. I really do appreciate you getting on. I think it's an important step in this process, and I appreciate all of those friendly teacher faces that I'm staring at. I can't look at all of you because there's a bunch is on there, but I appreciate you all getting on. I encourage you, like the rest of the community, to take this as an option to listen to Jeff, listen to the rest of his staff, give them the ability to speak through their plan, and then allow us with you to work through the next steps as we go through this process. But thank you again for, for your statement. Couple of, well, let's do that, let's do this real quick. I just want to get through a couple of agenda items. Typically, I would say the approval of payroll payable warrants are going around. That's not happening. I just want to check with the committee real quick just to make sure there hasn't been any hiccups. Everybody's going okay from making sure warrants and everything are getting executed efficiently?
Yes, I've been doing them through scanning. The other committee members have been doing that, too.
Yeah, and I signed some warrants today for Cheryl.
Okay, thanks. I just had to stop my video. The wind literally just blew the door open in my office. I apologize. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda as, as described in the agenda?
This is Susan, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. That was a motion by Susan, second by Keith. Roll call, vote, Cliff?
Whoops.
You want me, Cliff? Cliff might be.
Sorry, I apologize. Yeah.
I, okay.
Yes.
Susan?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Keith? Lori?
Aye.
Aye for me as well. Thank you. From the communication perspective, I'll start real quick. I want to just make a couple of quick communications and updates to this evening's agenda. Item two under our reports will not happen this evening. Bob Conry is unable to make our meeting and discuss these items, so these items will not happen. I will move them to our meeting on the 18th under the assumption that Bob will be available, and if we have to make any changes to that, we will make changes to that on the future, but we won't be having those. So that also will affect business items. We will not be voting on item E, which is obviously the budget, budget transfer approvals, because we won't be hearing all those presentations this evening. Are there any questions on that?
No.
No.
Okay. Jeff, unless you tell me there's a reason we need to vote on those budget transfer approvals, there shouldn't be any timeline associated with those, right? Correct?
We don't need to vote on them.
Okay, then we'll, then we'll wait till Bob can discuss those with us. Okay. A couple of other quick updates. We, just so everybody is aware, the school committee has chosen to schedule another school committee meeting for this Friday evening. With that, that will allow us to push our vote on the planned presentations to that Friday night meeting. Obviously, with the intention, the goal is to be able to have time to digest this evening's discussions. It will allow us to have our communication and discussions with BBA. It will allow us to take the feedback from the community in our town hall on Thursday, and it puts us in a position maybe to make a more knowledgeable and educated vote. So we will be pushing our vote to our Friday night meeting. And that, that will, that agenda will be posted on our website, and that will take place 6 o'clock on Friday evening. So we will not be voting in any relation to the plans this evening. We will just be listening to Jeff's presentation and discussing, and discussing as a school committee. I did, I mentioned the town hall. I posted publicly, and it'll be on the website, the agenda and link for the town hall on Thursday evening. That town hall is an opportunity for our communities and parents to obviously digest themselves, the information they'll hear this evening, put together their questions, provide those questions to us ahead of time, and we will work to answer those questions on Thursday evenings and work to create as much, obviously, communication as we can and discussion in an orderly format Thursday nights to make sure we get all the feedback as we can from parents in the community. One piece on that topic I need to bring to a school committee discussion is we have not talked about the length of that meeting and after sort of consideration around this, I do want to talk with the school committee to come up with a time limit on that, because my guess is if we did not do that, that could make for a very late evening on Thursday. So, and I did not want to make that decision in a vacuum. I believe that's a school committee discussion so that you can represent your communities and provide your feedback. So I don't want to do the whole roll call thing, but if anybody in the committee would like to start and has some feedback as to how they would like, how they feel about a time limit for Thursday night's discussion. Or maybe nobody cares how long it goes.
I think maybe a couple hours would be fine.
Yeah, I think, this is Angela. I think if you do, it's starting at 6, right? So if you put the time 6 to 8, if it has to run a little bit over, it can, but that, I think most of your issues and concerns will be similar, and I think that should give enough time to allow to air those and discuss them. Without a rehash of the same things over and over again.
Mrs. Susan, I concur with that.
You know, just to add one piece of information to that, because I, I do think the two hours is good. It can be efficient, right? And I think that's the goal of why we're trying to manage it in this way is we want to allow, obviously, for the most feedback we can, but we want to do it in a very supportive and efficient manner. I have heard out there that there is a group of parents who have taken it upon themselves to coordinate and begin to build a working document. One, in order, obviously, I guess that'll help consolidate redundant questions. And then secondly, obviously, we all extremely appreciate the time that Kristi Turgeon puts into things in, in order to not necessarily maybe flood her inbox with the questions. It'll allow her to manage that in a good way, and I think so. You know, I get the sense quite, a lot of the questions might be the same in many ways, right? So if we handle them in this manner, I think two hours might be, might be sufficient. Is that okay with everybody?
I agree. I agree.
Yes.
Okay. Kristy, you have, you have that. We can, we can adjust the agenda at an 8 o'clock end time?
Yes, sir. I'll take care of that for you.
Thank you very much. Another point for Thursday evening. As much as I would look forward to being on my 137 Zoom call for the week, I am unable to the town hall Thursday evening. With that being said, I want, there is, we will be opening it as a school committee meeting. This is, this will be Jeff's, Jeff's meeting to help answer some of those questions, but from a legal perspective, the, I expect there to be a quorum of school committee members on that meeting, listening to our, our parents and community's feedback. So because of that, we do need to schedule and call a school committee meeting. With myself not being there as the chair, I plan to, I'm going to appoint Cliff Laporte to be acting chair that evening. So he will be calling the school committee meeting to order that evening and helping manage that from that perspective. Any questions from the school committee there?
No.
So, but we will have a quorum otherwise, right?
Based on, based on everybody's, based on feedback I received, yes, there will be four of you, a minimum of four of you there for that meeting. Obviously, if that changes, please keep Cliff and Kristy up to date, because that may change how that gets handled if the quorum changes. So we will need, if that is going to change for anybody, please keep Cliff and Kristy up to date. All right. Moving on. Okay. With all that being said, again, I want to restate, I appreciate everybody being on here. The team, Jeff and his team will be presenting. There'll be multiple participants presenting tonight. These folks have put a lot of time and effort into what we're discussing tonight. I would appreciate everybody's understanding and everybody's lots of words now, but, you know, everybody's full support as we listen to this. And let's give them our, our attention, and we will provide feedback in the proper manner as we move forward. So again, thank you, everybody. Jeff, I will pass it on to you and the team.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you all for being here. I want to start out by just thanking the people who worked on this, worked on this program. Whether, whether you want to be recognized or not, it was a lot of work, and I do appreciate it. I especially want to thank the parents. We had a parent group that helped us with communication to, to the community, and they continue to advise us, and so I want to thank them, and they advise us some other stuff not related to communication. Tara, thank you for that comment. We're actually not too far off, which makes me think there's probably an easy way to do this, but here we are. So what are we going to do tonight? I'm going to give you an introduction. I'm going to talk about some things that maybe you're not aware of. Part of the, part of the issue with having a lot of people work on a project is that you have to respect your time outside of the project. And that, and that takes time, you know, it takes time. So sometimes there's some communication that gets left out, and in all fairness to them, they haven't seen the plan done. They worked on individual parts of it, and so what we're going to do tonight is I'm going to give an introduction and talk about some of the things we did in terms of risk assessment. And then the rest of the leadership team will talk about some more specifics of the plan, and then I will read a closing statement and make a recommendation to the school committee for tonight. So, um, so how did we get here? You know, there are a lot of components that go into developing this plan, but really, the biggest thing is a risk assessment. And I, and I do agree with Tara that there, there were some risks here. There's no question about that. But we did some research, and we thought we did our homework to try to, you know, to try to balance that. So the original guidance that was used for social distancing, as we know, was, was the six-foot guidance. It was a CDC guidance, continues to be the CDC guidance. But as we developed more studies on, on COVID-19 and additional guidance came out, the Department of Education, the DESC, reduced the minimum spacing in school-age children from six to three feet. So the question is, where did that come from? Where did, we know the WHO, that's what they use, but where did it actually come from? Kristy, can you put up that, can you put up that graph? I don't know if that's a yes or a no. I should keep bouncing that ball or what? All right. So this is where this came from. There was a meta-study done in, in June, and I put the source down there, so you can look this up. This is from the Lancet. You know, this is not a Newsweek article. This is a serious academic research that was done, but I leave it up there. So, and I'll have Kristy post this tomorrow, so you can look at this yourself, read through it, and you can see what it means to you. You know, everybody's going to interpret these things differently. But the key finding here is that in intermediate and lower-risk settings, the risk of infection is similar at one meter, which is approximately 39 inches, as it is in two, to two meters, which is about six foot six. That's a, that's Grok on his side, six foot six. And the experts suggest that schools would be considered low to intermediate risk, especially when you put the additional protections in place. So if you look at that graph and then you, you look at the detail, the, the, the two points you want to look at is the one meter and the two meter. Again, so that's, you know, three feet, three inches versus six feet, six inches. And you want to look at the red line and the green line. And so you can see there's a, there's a, there's a little bit of a difference in transmission and, and at one meter. At two meters, just over six foot six inches, there's almost no difference between the, the risk and, and, and the for low infection versus intermediate. But if you look over to the left where the graph is, you look at the absolute risk, it's still pretty low. So I'll leave this, I'll have this posted tomorrow, and that's where that information came from. I do want to read something. I know we like to use the CDC guidance as a rule, and it, and it's good guidance. It really is. There's an update, there was an update on July 23rd, 2020, and this is what it says about children. It says, "The best available evidence indicates that COVID-19 possesses relatively low risk to school-age children. Children appear to be at low risk of COVID-19. To put this in perspective, according to the CDC, as of July 17, 2020, the United States reported that children with adolescents under 18 years old account for under 7% of the COVID-19 cases, less than 0.1% of COVID-related death. So far in this pandemic, deaths of children are less than, are less than each of the five last flu seasons. Additionally, some children, certain underlying medical conditions, however, are at increased risk of severe illness from COVID-19." And it goes on. So this is where the graph came, came from. That's the first thing we considered. We, we said, you know, let's, let's see, let's see, let's, let's take that three-foot mark and see and look at the research. So that's the first thing we did. The next thing we considered is classroom capacity. So we had the principals go out, and we asked them to see at, at the minimum of three feet, could we fit an entire classroom in of students? Full classroom. Now, I've got some interesting emails from, from staff over the last couple of days, and And, you know, and, and I would say, do you know what three feet looks like? Three feet's close. Would you stand three feet from somebody? And you know what? I'm, I'm, I'm 59 years old and I have asthma that's been debilitating at some parts of my life. And the answer to that question is yes. With a mask on, I've been close, that close to people I don't know. You know, they've also said, well, six feet's the standard, you know, so don't you know when you go into the, into the, into a store, don't you know what those circles mean on the floor? That means that's as far as you can stand. And I get that. That's six feet guidance. It's CDC. It's good stuff. It doesn't replace common sense. You know what? If you're in line and, and you're around one of those circles and the guy in front of you, it's one o'clock in the afternoon and he has pajamas and a snorkel mask, maybe you back off to eight feet. Right? You're going to use common sense. So, but the question is, can we, can we fit those kids in? And, and the answer is yes. So if you, Christie, could you put that next one up there? Now, I don't know if we can get it all in there. Can we get it all in there, Christie? I think we have to. Can everybody see all of that, all the way down to percent space left?
Christie, can you put that in presentation mode to get rid of that left side?
This is my last, last slide, I promise.
From current slide, you need to select second one from the left. There you go.
Okay. So the question isn't whether I would stand three feet from somebody else because I'm an adult and I make, I make decisions based on, based on my personal responsibility. The real question is, what I do it to your kids and what I do it to staff? And the question there is absolutely not. So when we had them look at the classroom, we said, you know, if we have to crunch kids in at three feet from each other, then we're not going to do this, but let's see what we can do. So these are actually two classrooms and I didn't, I actually didn't pick these on purpose. I just picked two random classrooms. So if we look at classroom one, what they did is they tipped the width and the length, up one side and down the other. Now, if you do that multiplication, you can see that the square footage of that class is not 633. If you do the quick mental math, you know, you're in the 800. So it's 825 square feet. Why did we use 633? Because we wanted to use usable space. We didn't want to go right to the walls. So where does the other space come from? Well, the first thing the principals did is they took a border around the edge. The second thing they did is they cut out a swatch in front of the room. There was six feet forward and 25 feet long. Right? That's, that's roughly 100, that is, it's 150 square, square feet of room in the front of the class for, for the teacher or for whatever purpose you want. Okay. When they went to the edges, if there was a sink there and a little cubby, they didn't count the cubby. Right? So there's 192 square feet that isn't accounted for in that room. That exists. But instead we said, okay, let's do this. This is what he did. So let's look at 20 square feet per, per student. So if you, if you go on the floor and you take a, make a square that's roughly four and a half square, four and a half feet by four and a half feet, and you stand in the middle of it, that's your personal space. 20 square feet. If the kid next to you has the exact same space, your heads are about four and a half feet apart, not three feet apart. And that's the baseline. It's not three feet. Three feet is the minimum, but that's not what we did. And then we said, using just that 633, not the 200, then 192 that's already left over. With the, with the spaces of that 633, after we put all of the kids in, what percentage of the 633 is left? It's about 46%. And then we did the same thing with 36 square feet, which is a six by six, which puts kids at six feet, their heads at six feet. Now that's side to side, front to back in each case. Now you can see in this particular room, even at six feet, you got 21 square feet left over. You got 7% of the 633, not the 825. If you're going to use more, more space, we just gave the teacher more space. Okay? You look at the, the, the second, the second example, their classroom two, you can see really the same thing. The only difference is when you go to, when you go to a 36 square feet, a six by six square, you're short by 51 square feet. Sounds like a lot. It's basically a square on a floor that's seven by seven. It's not a lot of space. So even in that room where we're short, you're pretty close to the six foot. So I wanted to clear that up because I've been saying three feet, we're using a three foot guidance, the three foot guidance. We do better than three feet. And in some of the rooms, like, you know, what a, a students who have advanced needs, we do even better than that. We're eight to 10 feet minimum. So in no case do I suggest we put kids three feet apart or that we put teachers that close to kids. Now I'm not arguing that putting all those kids in the class on a hot day with masks is not uncomfortable. That's not what I'm saying. But we're not using the three foot, we're not using the three foot minimum. And I just wanted to clear that up. The third thing we looked at is, you can take that down, Christie. Thank you. The third thing we looked at is what do our class size numbers look like? And we're fortunate in this district. We're very fortunate because we have a community that supports education and they show that by voting some very difficult budgets. In fact, this year we had a, in, in Boylston, we had a 6% budget. And part of that 6% budget is because we asked for an additional teacher, which we got. They voted for. Middle of a pandemic, they gave you a thumbs up vote. That's their confidence in you. Berlin did the same thing. They have an extra teacher. So let's look what those numbers are. BES, the average classroom size is about 17.5. Add a new teacher in, it's about 16. It's going to bring those numbers down. BMS, it's about 15 students per classroom. With the new teacher, it brings the classroom size down to approximately 14. To give you an idea what that looks like, the Bankeroff School in Worcester, the private school, I think is at 13. You almost get into private school numbers there. At Tuhantou, it's a little diff, more difficult. They got a look, they, they certainly got more kids per, per classroom. They roughly have 82 students per grade. It's difficult to figure out because they specialize. So kids move from room to room. The other thing you need to consider with class size is that when we did our parent survey, roughly 10%, roughly 100 students, parents of students said that they were not going to come back to school under any condition. If that holds, that's, that's roughly 100 students, more who's not coming back, which then further reduces the classroom size. The fourth thing we looked at is the COVID-19 numbers in the community. And this is important because one of the things from the CDC is it said that, that the rate of transmission of, of kids tends to be lower in communities where the rates of transmission are low. And that, that makes sense. So, and we keep track of this. I mean, we go in every week and we check to see what these numbers are. We see if they're holding steady. In Berlin, the total cases so far have been 23 and Boylston, I mean, 21 and Boylston 23. Total, total positive cases in the last 14 days has been one in each town. Percent positivity, that is an interesting one because this is one of the national standards they use for opening businesses, set at 5%. In Berlin, it's 1.52. In Boylston, it's 1.00. And both, 00, and both of those numbers are holding steady. Hasn't seen an uptick. If it sees an uptick, then of course we have to think about either not opening or, or doing something else that, you know, going to someone, the kind of model where there's, we, we pull kids out of school. Right now they're holding steady. I know there's been a little bit of an uptick in the state and we'll keep an eye on it. So 1.52 and 1.00, the state is 1.74. Even at the state level, we're very, very low. So fourth thing we looked at, the 15, fifth thing we looked at, we considered is personal protective equipment. So far to date, we spent 200, roughly $220,000 on PPE for our district. A tiny district. In, in order to order things for the fall. Now that's things like masks, gowns, face shields, hand sanitizer, hand sanitizer stations, tents for outdoors so that we could hold outdoor classes, things like chorus and band, especially chorus where they have to sing. The, the guidance came through on that. We can have it only outdoors, kids spaced, I believe 10 feet apart. So even in a 20 by 40 tent, that's going to be, that's going to be, it's going to be close, but, but we think we can do it. The high school has two tents and each of the, the elementary schools have one. And if we get some more, if we get some more of the relief money, we'll purchase another tent for each elementary school. Maybe three for BES because of the way it's configured. We've, last year we've put in place some advanced cleaning and disinfection with, we purchased a electrostatic disinfection unit. It's far superior to just the spray. Instead of the, 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 the liquid coming out in a, in this kind of a spray form, it comes out in a mist. It has a charge to it. So it attaches to all surfaces. And it, and it provides a much, a much more complete coverage. The other advantage is, is safer. It uses approximately 40% less chemicals than, than a spray bottle. So we were doing it once a week and actually we put it in place before COVID-19. We put it in place during the cold cough season to try to offset some of the obstenses, the sicknesses that, from kids and for teachers. So we'll be doing that every single night and making sure the place is clean. And the most important thing we did when we looked at whether should, we should open the schools or not, is we looked at the risk of not coming back. I'm going to, I'm going to turn to the CDC report again. Again, we'll post this, we'll post this up there, but you can find it on the CDC link. I'm going to just read a couple of things. There's, there's more than one page, but "Social interaction at school among, among children in grades pre-K to 12 is particularly important for the development of language, communication, social, emotional, interpersonal skills. Important social interactions that facilitate the development of critical social and emotional skills are greatly curtailed or limited when students are not physically in school. In school, students are also able to access, access support systems needed to recognize and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, appreciate others' perspectives, and make responsible decisions. An environment where students feel safe and connected, such as school, is associated with lower levels of depression, thoughts about suicide, social anxiety, and sexual activity, as well as higher levels of self-esteem and more adaptive uses of free time." It goes on and on. "The benefits of kids being in the school far outweighs them not being in school." And ultimately, you know, we just set the stage. It's not my decision and it's not the union's decision. It's the parents' decision and whether they believe we provide an environment that's safe enough for their children to return. So that's my introduction. I'll be back after the others present to read a closing statement. But if we could just continue, I don't have my sheet in front of me, so I, I forget who goes next. Karen.
Yeah, it's Karen, Jeff.
So Jeff asked me to talk a little bit about the PPE that's in place and I think he's already mentioned some of it. But that was our first concern. We wanted students to come back and staff to come back in a really safe environment. We wanted to make sure we had the PPE. It was a challenge to get it in the beginning. You'll see in the plan that cloth face coverings are required for all students, grades two and above, and really, really recommended for all students. On the bus, they are required for all students if they're riding the bus. So those will be provided by students and their parents and for the staff themselves. But we also wanted to have PPE in the school building for both staff and students in case they get lost or dirty or whatever during the school day. So we do have some masks that we've been able to order for that. So in early May, we began purchasing PPE for at least the first three months. We didn't know how it was going to go. So we, we, we set that as a target for three months to start with. We got gloves, face shields, eye protection. We have the N90, KN95 masks for the nurses. They worked really hard to get some decent prices from good vendors. And so by the, it took us until the end of July to actually get all of the pieces in place, but we now have them in the schools. We have hand sanitizer that's in the schools already as well. We've got touch-free thermometers in place. So we feel like we've got a good starting set of supplies already in place. We also were able to get the smile mask. Some of the parents had talked to us about wanting to be able to see teachers' faces and for some of the young kids and some of our special needs students. So we were able to find those and get those in place as well. They're the ones that have the clear front panel, especially for younger kids so that they can see the facial expressions. We've established isolation rooms in each building. So if a student were to become ill during the day, we have a place that they can safely go and be isolated from other students until parents can pick them up. And then in addition to the regular hand washing, nurses are going to do training at the beginning of the year. They developed a PowerPoint and a training that they're going to do with staff, as well as some that they're going to do with students at the beginning of the year. And those pieces are in place. So I think at this point, we feel like we have the recommended PPE in the building to keep students and staff safe, as well as the disinfectant spray that we're doing on a nightly basis. All of those pieces are in place at this point.
Thank you, Karen. Karen, did you have anything else before Jeff moves it to his next presenter?
No, I think we're set.
Okay. Just quickly, I'd like to just take a minute before Jeff, before we move on, just a couple of reminders. In an effort to make sure as many people could join as possible, we use this format with this Zoom. And in some cases, there are other, other formats that give us a little more control. But we wanted to ensure that the license count that we had allowed for the maximum number of participants. So we can't necessarily have control over unmute. Again, I want to reiterate, please have respect if you're just, especially if you're joining late or if somehow you've come unmuted. Please be cognizant of that and mute yourself while someone's presenting. I appreciate that. And again, as always, as the folks are presenting, please take an opportunity to And again, as always, uh, as the folks are presenting, please um, take an opportunity to uh, you know, write down or prepare your questions and provide them for the town hall uh, as we move forward, as that's when we'll be uh, doing our our public interaction from that perspective. So I appreciate that. Again, Jeff, uh, it looks like you had Carol next on your uh, gender. Does that what you want to go to? I guess that's a yes, Carol.
I think it was Paul or me, but I will go if you're comfortable with that.
I'm seeing Carol on the agenda.
All right.
It's whatever works for you guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. The superintendent asked me to to speak about three different components uh, this evening in in the plan. First is around the social emotional learning. The second is around instruction and particularly around intervention, and then going into professional development for the staff. So the first few weeks of school, I know that we're very committed to social emotional learning for our students returning. It's our top priority, um, and it's also our top priority for teachers as well, and I'll talk about that a little bit in professional professional development part of this. So to start with, we secure the universal screener um, that will be available for all students in grades K through twelve. This universal screener will give us information about where our children are at in terms of their feeling, their emotions um, as they begin the school year, what they've experienced while they were out. It's certainly a screener that would be involved in having parent permission to allow us to administer the screening. But we're hoping that as we collect the data on individual students, it'll give us an understanding of the needs of each of our children in the district so that we can move forward and pro- present tiered interventions of support. I want to speak for a moment about some of the supports we already have in place. At the elementary level, we have three tiers of support. The first, of course, is something we've been using already, a curriculum that we that you've heard about many times, caring school community. We've been very grateful to that um, to that organization. They just came out with eight additional lessons that talk that they've given to us for free. The principals now have them at hand and they're gonna work with the teachers and introducing those. These these lessons address dealing with anxiety and concerns in students, addressing isolation and re- resocializing as they come into the building. And we think this is really key for the children and their teachers to be able to gather in community and have those discussions. Our tier two would be small group instruction or small groups gathering, either virtual outdoor formats for lunch bunch activities or small group, just just gathering together. Um, and then tier three, certainly the services of our school psychologists and V C B As in each of the buildings. On the middle high school level, we're scheduling uh, enduring the support block counseling sessions which focus on S E L. The councils plan to come to the classrooms and then given the information on the data from the screening, they're gonna potentially develop small groups of students with similar needs and concerns and hold either face-to-face or Zoom lessons, um, Zoom meetings with those students. I think the screening will also drive uh, grade level lessons and curriculum within each grade level provided by the counselors. So in that, we will have specific lessons that the counselors will deliver. And also that we have available at the middle and high school, our school adjustment counselor and our school psychologist. So that is our first, you know, first and foremost, our top priority is the well-being of our students and our staff. The second area and instruction, you know, we talked about this before in the springtime about closing the gaps. You know, we were worried, remote learning, and we certainly talked a lot about this um, as educators, worried about those children who did not have um, the access that they needed to to instruction. Some of those students who on their own may not have been successful without the encouragement of their teachers. So we're looking at ways to to get gather assessments, um, information on those students. At the elementary level, early on, I think it probably was around June, I don't know, May, I don't, they're all running together at this moment, these months. But this grade level team sat down and identified um, assessments that they wanted to run on the students. After the first couple of weeks of settling in with the, to the school and just kind of getting their bearings. So we would find out information for about those students um, that we could and gather the data and then um, provide intervention. At Tohonto, the teachers spoke about using D D Ms, that's district determined measures, to determine content-specific curriculum gaps for each student that may may have existed and and then we haven't closed out those gaps from last year. We have in addition already on board in our schools, title one instructors at each school or tutors. We have gotten a CARES grant that will enable us to hire additional tutors, perhaps to support classroom teachers, to work with the title one tutors and teachers at each building in an effort in the first, you know, we like to say four to six weeks, but we don't know what would take to close those gaps, but we're we're intent on on supporting those struggling students that we need to to reach out to. Um, one of the things I also wanted to point out about that is, you know, learning did not stop in the spring. We're very mindful of identifying standards that we were teaching. They may not have been all the the standards expected by the state that we typically do, but teachers were teaching and teachers were identifying those standards. I think that we left at the end of the the year, I don't want to say feeling great, you know, we can't can't even identify that. That means so many things, you know, it's so many different levels. But we felt confident that we're gonna be okay in closing these gaps early, early in in the school year, that we can, we can support those students and that we're maybe, we'll find out, we may be surprised that we're not so far off with the majority of our students. Um, and I think that's gonna be important information that we're gonna gather during that that time period. The final area I wanted to mention tonight was professional development. So in the spring, we did a parent survey on technology and was later followed up by a parent-to-parent survey that our committee, that our subcommittee worked on. And um, it was interesting, I think in the in the spring survey, the technology results from parents in particular spoke about the struggles they had to find information online. They really couldn't, they didn't know where to go for it. And there were a lot of different kind of platforms that were being used, a lot of different repositories. Um, and we worked a lot on on addressing that, I think. So as part of this plan, we came to, I guess, a consensus uh, that we wanted to make sure that all teachers, two things were happening. All teachers, first of all, were trained in using Google Classroom, Google Suite tools, and then Zoom at the elementary schools and Google Meet and or Zoom at the Tohonto level. With that in mind, we also, the other areas, parents wanted some training. The the parent survey uh, in the in the summer indicated less people needed training and navigating these these platforms. But we wanted to offer to those parents who did need it. So we we enlisted one of our uh, staff members, and I do want to mention him by name because I am eternally grateful to him. Um, and that's Wes Swenson over at Tohonto. Wes, if you go on to the B B R S D website, he's already posted uh, online trainings in these areas so that teachers could maybe begin to take a look at these if they were struggling. So they became familiar with them while they had time to comfortably learn how to use these platforms. We also want to embrace time and giving time during those days that we're coming back. Now we have ten additional days and where teachers will have time to get on and learn how to use these tools. In addition to these kind of mandatory tools, I guess, um, we also have offered optional tools for teachers to learn, things like Screencastify, for example, and Flipgrid. Wes provided that training online, so you can click on there and learn how to do that, whether you're a student, I mean, whether you're a teacher, a student or even a parent, so learn how to do it. I'm gonna get on myself and learn how to do a couple of those things I'm curious about. So that's already available. And then certainly the students, I know that the number of the teachers during our discussions this summer mentioned, but most of the kids at the upper levels are really very competent and and more so than all the rest of us, I guess. They can usually end up showing us how to do most of the things we need to learn how to do, but but we still do have those students who need help and we offer um, some student trainings with that. We do want to offer evenings or opportunities for face-to-face trainings as well with parents. Um, even I know reach outs with with our um, technology folks for the for our staff as well. So I I mentioned that becau- first because we also have to keep in mind, I'm thinking of what Jeff was talking about, Tara was talking about earlier. We have to, even regardless of how we begin, we have to be prepared for this constant shift that may occur during the school year. We may start out in person, we may start out remote, we may go in person, we may end up back in remote again. So we need to be able to learn how to use those tools. We don't know, we don't know any of us. So this is really important, I think, um, for for staff to be aware of being able to use these and parents as well. So some of the other areas um, that we're working on for for professional development for staff include something that I had talked with staff about the end, gosh, it feels like years ago, but probably around January, February. So we would have done this, I think, regardless of the the circumstances, is around mental health and trauma-sensitive training, identifying trauma in the classroom. We have got to spend time being able to identify those warning signs. So that's gonna be a really important training that we want to work on with staff. I think it's gonna be key, and I mentioned this before, about available time for staff support. I'd like to be able to give time for staff to come in and stand there in your classrooms and return to what it feels like to be there again, to connect with colleagues, to just be, I guess. Um, and also to be able to extend some resources to you, to be able to talk to people who may be able to give you support in a way you feel that is confidential and you feel listened to. Um, because if our, you know, it's it's the mental health of our staff is as well that we're concerned about. Other trainings include safety, the safety trainings, Karen talked about P P Es. We need to, we need to instruct, we need to inform our staff around those areas. Again, the S E L training, I mentioned that earlier, we have some new lessons coming up, training for classroom teachers and how they can work with counselors to deliver those instructions at the Tohonto level. We look for some time for vertical teaming, and this was a very important time period because we wanted teachers to have time to to meet with the grade after, the grade that they were sending their children to and the grade before them. So they could really talk about where they left off with standards. What about the students that were coming on into into their classrooms? Who were they? Tell me about them. We so we had, wanted to allow for that time for that vertical teaming. It it's it's so critical to give to, and and all the other many things you talk about during, we would talk about during this teaming time that we we feel is imperative. We want to be able to give our substitutes and our tutors training in all of the safety protocols. They too will be in and out of the building so that everybody needs to be trained. And I should also add in there, most likely our custodial staff and and our food service staff as well. In addition to all those trainings, we have our annual trainings, our Alice recertification, I haven't forgotten about that, restraint training, sexual harassment trainings. We'd like to get some staff meetings in there, grade level meeting time, department meeting time. So it, while the the ten-day extension that the state has granted us, you know, seems like um, was heavily negotiated, um, we're gonna, we're gonna suck up every ounce of of those ten days in preparation for for our return to school. So so that's some of the areas that we've been focusing on in this plan, and you can find those in the plan, mostly on pages sixteen and eighteen for the school committees. I think in page nine as well, if you want to take a look at those. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol. Um, good evening. I'm Paul Mara, the technology coordinator for anybody who might not know. Um, my portion of this evening is is pretty brief. Um, and um, I I ask for your forgiveness as I keep peeking at my notes to make sure I I touched on the few points that I wanted to. We had um, reported in the spring that um, we had approximately ninety-four families that were in need of technology um, when we went to our remote learning um, this spring. Um, through the parent survey, um, we found that the need is going to be closer to a hundred and eighty students um, that are gonna need access to technology devices. Um, should we have to go to full remote or some kind of hybrid? Um, I'm pleased to say that um, we are um, ready to go with that. So even on day one, if we needed to um, move to some kind of full remote or hybrid, um, we're in a situation where we're ready to go with that. I also wanted to mention that we applied for the Remote Learning Technologies Essentials Grant. Um, that's a state twenty-five million dollar grant. Um, we're hoping to hear um, good news soon. Um, that will help to fray some of the costs, uh, not only of those um, devices that we had to purchase, the initial about hundred Chromebooks, but also um, for families that um, are struggling with internet access. Between uh, the state today, I don't know if it's official yet, so um, they cut a deal with Verizon for um, the next twelve months um, for schools to be able to purchase uh, in lieu of uh, our needy families um, at a very reasonable rate. So again, hopefully that Remote Learning Technologies Grant um, will help us because currently um, we have at least fifteen families and, you know, we expect that, you know, if if things continue to go um, poorly, that uh, that number's not gonna go down, it it's only gonna go up. So um, a- again, uh, we're in a good position there. Um, and and so from a technology standpoint, um, I I think we're as good as we can be um, at at this point um, in time and uh, very proud of that, but also uh, very happy to um, be able to say that um, as as the technology director, that we're um, we're ready for all, any and all situations.
Okay. Paul, where um, where are we from a standpoint of um, in the sense that we um, right, when we begin to think about the flexibility required and the potential to move back and forth uh, between whatever plans, whether it be a hybrid model and or remote model. And I know parent surveys were taken early on in this feedback. Where are we from a standpoint, if the requirement and the requests from the community for more ma- Chromebooks or laptops are are needed, right? It increases. Where are we from a capacity standpoint to handle an influx if we get to that point?
Um, we are in a very good position. We are um, unless we get to a point where every single student needed one, I mean, we are almost at a point where we could do one-to-one if needed, if they needed to take them home. Um, so unless we had total collapse and nobody had uh, any devices at home with which to work, um, we could probably pull it off.
Okay.
I I will add, there's it it it's been very difficult to get Chromebooks. Um, many, many, many school districts um, are are doing the same things we're doing. Um, but orders are booked back to October um, in many cases. Um, I've worked hard uh, through my years in this position to um, have some good relationships with vendors. And um, certainly this summer, I I think a lot of that paid off.
And what type of um, what type of um, if we look at last year's move to remote and the dispersment of uh, Chromebooks or or whatever piece of material for assistance, how did that experience go and what challenges were faced as it relates to, you know, the equipment when it came back to you, uh, equipment that maybe needed repairs and that type stuff. It's one thing for us to be prepared to go one-to-one, that doesn't leave us a lot of um, obviously room if there's challenges. So wha- what kind of, what did you see last time around?
So overall, um, the damage rate of of what went home wasn't much significantly different from damage rate that we see um, when they're just in the schools. So overall, um, we try to build in that kind of capacity, um, five to ten percent um, so that we're never leaving people stranded um, with with those that are so that we're never leaving people stranded with, with those that are expecting to have devices. So, so again, I, I think we'd only end up in a situation where, you know, we're, we're struggling if every single student had, had, had a need. But beyond that, I, I think, you know, we, we would still have enough spares to, to meet the need.
Jeff, did you, do you have anyone else? I know you mentioned coming back to yourself, but did you have anyone else on your list you wanted to have present this evening?
I think the principals.
All right. Well, why don't we start with Mr. Thompson then, because his first name starts with an A, so I think that's fair.
Sounds very fair. And I'm going to share this, this part of the presentation with my good friend, Mr. Campbell. As you know, the, the planning for the reentry was, did occur jointly. When, when students come back to the building in any capacity, it's going to look a lot different than it did on March 13. You know, we did plan this together, but when you get into some of the nuts and bolts, you know, we probably won't get into all of the nuts and bolts in this meeting now, but it will, there will be some theme and variation because we have very different buildings, we have different population sizes and things like that. For the purpose of just talking tonight, we kind of broke it down into three parts. We, we have some procedural changes that we're going to put into place to, to do our best to ensure health and safety for everyone in the building. We also have some changes to lunch, recess and specials that I think, you know, judging from the conversations I've had and with parents, it's an area of, of concern, rightfully so. And also the additional purchases, I think, I apologize because my internet did kick out for a while, so I missed some of the early part, but we've made some, some additional purchases to try to, to support students and, and staff when they return to the building. I'm going to let John start by talking about procedures. That's good. All right with you, John?
Well, it's good to me. Thanks, everybody. Have a, thanks for all your patience this evening as we go through all of this. I'm going to talk about procedures here at school of a moving to and fro in the building. Obviously, one of the areas we've spent a lot of time on is arrival and dismissal. A lot of our challenges and procedures are based on distancing. How do you bring a bus full of children, even though it won't be a full bus? How do you bring a group of children into the building and not have them all clump together, which is of course what they're used to? So we're doing a variety of things to mark spaces, mark the floors, stagger bus arrivals, stagger bus release. We're also looking at ways to get kids into and out of cars for parent pickup. We started using something called the Dismissal Manager last year, and we're expanding it this year so that at the end of the day, we'll be able to use that and parents will actually check in with staff who will be outside. So the kids don't all have to, here in Berlin anyway, they all come down to the gym and they stand in line by grade, and then they all come out. If you've ever picked up your kid here, they all go out in front and they watch for their car and it's a really sweet part of this building, but standing all together waiting for your car is not going to work right now. So we're going to stagger that system as well. We spent a lot of time searching down appropriate hand sanitizers so the kids will wash their hands and they'll wash them at multiple points during the day minimally. When they enter the building, when they go to the bathroom, knock on wood. When they go off of mask breaks, when they go to lunch, when they return from lunch at the end of the day. It's a lot of hand sanitizer. As I mentioned before, we've, we're working on spacing marks on the floor, kind of like you see at Wegmans. And signage as well, I would say that Anna Amaral, our nurse here at Berlin, but who's been helping us on the committee, was very helpful in finding appropriate signage for kids. As you know, students in grades two through five will be expected to wear masks throughout the day. We will be encouraging children pre-K through one to wear masks. We'll have a minimum of three scheduled mask breaks and the mask breaks will be scheduled just so that we don't have a lot of people running into each other. We don't want everybody out there at once, especially when the weather starts to turn. Jeff mentioned using the tents, that'll be one of the reasons we use the tents, especially in clement weather. The custodians I know are currently working on a schedule of cleaning, which will include a lot of attention to high-touch areas. Jeff mentioned the disinfecting sprayers in the evening. And we have identified COVID isolation rooms in each of the elementary schools. I'm sure Ms. Tisserie will talk about the high school as well. I know we all have done that. And we'll be following state recommendations on how to respond to different kids' symptoms if you are. Those of you who know where my office is, I'm right next door to the nurse, so I see the parade during normal times. So she'll be extra attentive and needing more space kind of as we come back into school. So that's the procedure. Go back to Ace.
Thanks. So in terms of specials, lunch and recess, you know, the goal is to limit movement throughout the building as much as possible. To that end, the, the plan is to bring specials into the, into the classrooms. Unless we're, unless the weather permits and the activity permits us to take them outside. The default is I will, we will always be encouraging people to, to use outside whenever possible. You know, the, the, there's not likely to be a chorus or a combined band, but we do hope to have instrumental lessons as long as we're not co-mingling in different classrooms. And the guidance around that, you know, talks about appropriate spacing and there's, there's plenty of guidance around that. We've already gone over that one. Mrs. Brush, she's very well aware of that. For the most part, PE will take place outside. When it moves inside, it's likely to be, become a health lesson. Tech will be in the classroom and the library can fluctuate depending on, on where it's, you know, what the weather is. And it's more likely that the librarian will be bringing books to the room rather than kids cruising the stacks. Let's see, we will be dividing the field into areas so that people have kind of areas to go. They won't be coming out and saying, oh, you know, somebody's over here, I gotta go find someone else and gives teachers an opportunity to kind of set up, you know, their, their space as it is and use whatever markings they want to use for, for appropriate spacing, because even when they are outside, we will be maintaining social distance. Lunch for BES will be in the gymnasium. That way we can accommodate six feet of distance. We have enough tables and we have enough room. In Berlin, they will be in the cafeteria and the gymnasium. We're both talking about three separate sections of 30-minute lunches. And the, the foods will be delivered to, to the, to the locations and to the students, so we don't have a backup at point of sale. We won't necessarily be collecting money. Most at this point, most is online anyways. So as soon as the students put in the order in the morning and they receive their lunch, then it can all be done electronically. Let me see, in between every lunch, we'll be wiping down the, the tables in accordance with, with state recommendations. And that'll be a combined effort from the custodians and the cafeteria staff. You know, we, we do have a new cafeteria manager. So we're, we're in discussions about what the, what the options will be. I would anticipate at the beginning of the year, you know, packaged cold kind of lunches until we get into a routine and then we can kind of expand onto, into some of the, the favorites. Get the pizza out there and stuff like that.
Good. Then finally, some health and safety purchases. We've made some of these, you've already heard about. The district has been very much on top of PPE, which is a challenge because everybody's looking for the same stuff. So kudos to the people who were involved in that. I know Mr. Conry is hot on the search for touchless water refill stations for the kids. We're going to encourage use of water bottles. If you ever have ever seen small children trying to use bubblers, you understand to
Kristen, I think you're, you're off of mute.
There we go. Working on the purchase of air purification devices for all the classrooms here at the elementary schools. And as Jeff mentioned, he's, we've purchased tents for outdoor use. And I would just say kind of in closing, or at least for my part of it, Ace, feel free to tag along. This is all stuff that we've talked to as of like earlier this afternoon. It's a constantly changing thing. We think of one thing and it leads us to three other things. You know, we don't view this part of the presentation as a finished product at all, but rather this is where we are today.
All right. I will, I'll go ahead and discuss some of the changes at Tohoto and some of the things that we've done. I think it, it echoes some similar changes that the elementary schools have, have done as well. And Sally Stukels will be joining me as I discuss those. I think most importantly, all of the procedural changes and changes that we are making and will continue to make, the top priority is, you know, the safety and well-being of our students, our faculty and our staff. And I was, you know, I, I often joke about the fact that I, I don't know if I fell asleep during my graduate administrator's class on how to, you know, deal with pandemics, but I must have missed that one. So this is, you know, this is something that again is, is fluid and is constantly changing. So one of the biggest changes that we are going to see at Tohoto is to our schedule. Currently, we have a six-period, seven-day rotating schedule. Recommendation is to change to a four-period, two-day rotating schedule. And the reason for this is that actually we're thinking more of the ability to be able to decrease the amount of transitions within the building. Instead of, you know, every 48 minutes, you know, students get up and change classrooms. You know, it will be after about 90 minutes that that will, that that will happen. And again, it's done for safety reasons, to limit the amount of person-to-person contact in hallways as well as common areas. The, because we are a middle high school, we're able to do things a little bit differently in the middle school than we are in the high school. So I'm going to go ahead and let Sally talk a little bit about, you know, how, how those differences are gonna, are going to be seen.
Right. So in the middle school, in addition to having this schedule that would allow students to be in class longer to limit exposure, we're also developing cohorts based on math classes. And this would allow students to travel together and therefore again have a limited exposure to other people. Also, there'll be a rotation of, of courses for these classes or for these cohorts that would allow a smoother hallway passing transition from class to class. And we also through this process can have electives come to them in their regular classrooms to again, limit that exposure. And it will also allow all the students to receive various electives throughout the week. So that's what we can do for the middle school. I mean, for the high school, there's, it's a much, much more complex. So therefore those students, regardless of the model, would be following the four-period, five-day regular schedule.
Thank you, Sally. Similar to Ace and John, you know, we have to take a look at arrival and dismissal into our building. Typically, we have all students arriving, middle school students through the middle school entrance, high school students through the high school entrance. We'll be utilizing our side doors now again to limit the amount of, of students that are congregating in one area. And as they, you know, walk up to those entrances, there will be visuals on the ground that are six feet away to get our students thinking about those things prior to entering the building. And we will do arrival and dismissals on a staggered manner. For example, when students are leaving the building, when we're dismissing, they'll remain in their last period class. And we will dismiss students who drive first, and then we will dismiss by buses, similar to what the elementary schools do. And then we will have, we haven't finalized this, but then we will have, you know, those being picked up by parents will be working on a schedule for that, so we don't have traffic jams and, and backing up onto, onto Route 70. And when the, you know, when the students enter the building, again, as Ace and John had said, we will have hand sanitizer, hand sanitizing stations throughout the building in hallways as well as common spaces. Each one of our classrooms will have hand sanitizers for students. And, you know, before and after lunches, we will be having our students either, you know, obviously wash their hands or use the sanitizers as well. One of the other things that we've already done because, or we will be doing because our bathrooms in our, in the building, the, we utilize hand dryers, which obviously blow air and circulate air. So what we are going to be doing is installing paper towel dispensers to limit the amount of air from washed hands or you know, water, et cetera, to be dispersed through the, through the bathroom. So those will be installed as well. And we'll also be working on passing times. As far as instead of dismissing everyone from class at the same time, we'll be working on a stagger dismissals. And all of our hallways will be one-way, except for our main corridors that lead to the nurse's office, the main office and through the, through the cafeteria area. Mask breaks, mask breaks will be scheduled on an hourly basis. And again, we'll be working on that. Lunch will still be provided in the cafeteria, but we will also be utilizing our gymnasium. We do have a covering for our floor, so it is a large space. So we will be utilizing that for, for lunches as well as the, the regular cafeteria and the tent space and our patio space outside as well. But of course, you know, making sure that socially distancing protocols are in place. One big change that's going to be for, for students is that we will not be using lockers this year. And that is hallway lockers. And our locker rooms will be closed until we obviously get clearance and, and guidance on being able to open those up. As Ace or John had said, we're purchasing two water stations, water bottle, water bottle filling stations. And all of our bubblers will be closed down to use. Our isolation rooms have already been identified. And there are strict protocols and procedures in place for anyone displaying any, any type of COVID-like symptoms. And lastly, to also add to safety is the school nurse will be putting together kits for each one of our classrooms that contain, you know, general first aid supplies like Band-Aids, tissues, you know, Vaseline for chapped lips, et cetera. And that's to hopefully minimize the occupancy of the nurse's office. And as well as, you know, making sure that we have space available for those students that are displaying COVID-like symptoms.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Ace and John as well. Jeff, did you have anyone else or will we be sending it back to you?
I think we're done. I just wanted to, wanted to read a closing statement, make a recommendation to the committee, if I could. Okay. Over the past few months, we have worked on three viable models for Over the past few months, we have worked on three viable models for return to school this fall to be submitted to the Department of Education, a full return model, a remote model, and a hybrid model. I say we because 26 staff members, including classroom teachers, special educators, support staff, administrators, and paraprofessionals representing K through 12 were invited by the, by the building administrators to serve on two committees to contribute to the development of these models. We do not know what next year will bring. And the purpose of the models is to be prepared for the potential shifts that we may experience depending on the spread of COVID-19. What these educators were not invited to do was to make a decision about what models we would use to open the school year. And this is where we have a disconnect and why ultimately, I believe, members of the teaching staff have asked to have their names removed from the document that we presented tonight. The decision rests in the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the vote of the school committee. And ultimately, the decision to send children to school rests with the parents and the families that we serve in our district. The decision is based on data, is based upon recommendations of the Massachusetts Commission of Education, countless hours of meetings with the superintendent, guided from the Department of Education and medical practitioners in the field, including child psychologists, and logistical ability to provide a safe return to school for our children. Now, we are left a mitigated decision based on fear. Fear that is pervasive and contagious throughout our state. The commissioner strongly recommends a four return to school based upon data. The recommendations of the experts in the field and a core belief that our children desperately need to return to school, not only for their education, but for their mental health and their well being. In this state alone, families are beginning to exit public schools and pay tuition at parochial and private schools. The archdiocese of Fall River alone intends to reopen its schools fully. And so we stand to lose our families and our students from fear, a fear that has gripped our educators. Tonight, I will be making a recommendation to the school committee to move from what I originally recommended, which is a four return to school, to a hybrid model, which I intend to present and negotiate with the teachers' union tomorrow. Despite the fact that our students can be, can return to the classroom with more than three feet of power, I cannot in good conscience make a recommendation that will not afford our students a positive learning environment where they will feel welcome, where they will be placed in the middle of a tug of war between the adults that they are counting on. Hybrid models are considered across the state. They are largely the choice of districts in which the student population is far too large to consider three feet or six feet on which the school facilities do not provide inadequate conditions for return. This is not my first choice, but I'm willing to work with the union to make a compromise, this compromise happen. We have so much planning left to do and we need to move on. We need to take the steps to get this model set up and we need to be ready to welcome our children back to school with open hearts and open minds. And with that, I recommend that the school committee postpone its decision to vote on the reentry plan until Friday, August 7. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. So I want to, at this point, obviously allow for, this is where I would like to engage the school committee and obviously the school committee and their questions and their discussion around the topics. I want to, so why don't I, why don't I first start by, I don't want to, I don't want to lead the question, topics. Why don't I open it up to the panel of the school committee? Is there a member who would like to, if they have questions, go first? I'm hearing none.
I was gonna say.
Susan, go ahead.
I'll take it. So there are a couple of things I didn't hear about, I'd like to hear a little more about. One is the students that are being prioritized for daily instruction face to face in schools. No matter which option is being, which model is being pursued, could we hear a little bit of description about how services will be delivered to those students being prioritized?
So is it okay if I answer that, Jeff? The state has prioritized our highest need students for special education, students who are in substantially separate classrooms. And our goal is to bring those students in regardless of the plan as much as we possibly can. And we'll have to constantly be in touch with, you know, the, the help and safety to make sure that they can be there safely. But these are students who are challenged sometimes to learn through an online modality. And so they want us to prioritize these students to be in school with their teacher as much as possible. These students are already identified as through the, the state system as high need students. And those are the ones that we'll be looking at and talking with families about.
There, so Karen, there were, in the, in Desi's guidance, there were a number of categories of potential students who might potentially be designated as high needs, including students who were severely behind or students who have insecure home situations and so on. So is it, are you only prioritizing certain category of complex special needs and not some of these other groups that were listed as potential high need students?
No, we have, it's complex special needs, students with EL students and students who are homeless or in foster care that may need that. Sometimes it's difficult with these children because there's not a place to go to. It's not a separate classroom. Their class will be going online and so it may make more sense for them to be online with those students. Or it may be that they're in the building working online. We just have to look at each child individually.
Okay, thank you.
This is Angela, another question for Karen. You had mentioned in some of your, your report to us that we received in the packet material about this summer, the special need students were learning remotely this summer and that you were hoping to go into the classrooms on Thursday, was that last Thursday, this Thursday? Did I understand that correctly and where's the status on that with the summer?
That's a great question, Angela. Our hope had been to bring them in last Thursday. We were in touch with all of the parents. Our KN95 masks did not come in in time. They came in right about, I think it was Wednesday, so we wouldn't have had time to contact parents. But the plan is that they are going in this week. It's more of an introduction, let's be comfortable, let's talk about wearing masks, let's be comfortable being back in the building. It is the very end of summer school, but we wanted to give them that extra opportunity just to have that contact with some of the staff and to really train them on how to properly go into the building in a very small group and how to wear their masks and wash their hands with a little extra attention. So that should be starting on Thursday.
I'll go for another question since it's quiet. The, is there a remote opt for those families to decide not, they don't want to return to face to face? It, what, what is the remote option for them and what does that, what does that look like? Can that be, can you describe that?
Yeah, Susan, I mean, I'll take that question. We are waiting for Desi to release it. There are two platforms that they'll be offering for parents to opt into. These are perf, there's a fee for purchasing these platforms for students. So we would need to get a number for that. We don't know enough about that information other than Desi has put these platforms together, the remote learning. And they are developed for K through 12 students. I, I can't tell you more about that at this point because they, it's, it's been, it's been a secret for all of us. They were supposed to release it today. I actually checked right before we got to the meeting tonight to see if we heard any sign because they like to release things like around five, six o'clock at night. I'm hoping we hear something by tomorrow, but there is a webinar tomorrow as well around two o'clock that I'm going to participate in to find, see if I can find out more information. So I can get that to you once, once we know.
So that's an additional cost for the district?
It will be, Susan, but what we intend to do, we are getting, we're going to be applying for the, what they call the 225 grant. You may have heard about that and we'll incorporate those fees into, into that grant. That'll be one of the questions we're asking parents. I forgot, does anybody remember exactly? There were, there was, I think, 10% of the parents had, maybe perhaps that's what Jeff said earlier. They were indicating they weren't coming back. I don't know if that means they're going elsewhere or they're interested in a remote platform. I'll also be interested in number of parents who may choose to homeschool their students. But if they do indicate to us, and we do plan to send information about that out shortly, we will, we will provide a subscription to that platform as well. One of the things we've said about it though, and I'm anticipating your next question, which would be if, if a family chooses to go into that remote learning option, we would ask them to stay with that for at least in, in the case of Tohoto, a semester or in the case of the elementary school, a trimester. So that the children aren't getting confused by moving back and forth out of the Desi platform and, and our own teaching. So that's definitely been a consideration that we've discussed.
So if they opt for this remote platform, then they essentially have nothing to do with their classroom cohort.
That is correct. That is correct.
Or their teacher, they'd be separated from their usual teacher.
Yes, until such time that they're, that they are, you know, determined and we've discussed with them that they would want to return and were able to, to put them back in their classroom.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
I have a question. With the, the specials, if the weather is not well for a while, does that mean the kids will not be practicing or singing until they, I mean, until they go outside? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
No, I can, I can understand that confusion. If, the specials will take place in the, in the classroom for inclement weather. So they wouldn't be singing in the classroom if it's music class, they'd be doing other activities. We talked about different kinds of, different ways to do drumming and things like that. So I know Audrey is, is working on, on a bunch of different ideas. I know PE would probably segue into a health lesson and some things like that. Library can easily be accommodated inside the classroom. I think the preference would be to have it outside.
And. An easy thing, I'm just curious. Oh, this is easy, I was just.
They will, they will have specials every, every day. What it will look like will vary greatly. And, and if the, if there's weather is bad, then the teachers will have, will have to come up with backup plans to do it in the classroom.
Yeah.
One of the things we're, we're doing, the tents we purchased, they don't have sides. But we're, we're looking into the possibility of buying sides. It's not like a wall and we have to check with the Department of Health to, to say, you know, if you have these things partially down, is that still considered enough airflow that, that it's outside and, and students can sing in it? So, I mean, there's a temperature issue where it gets to a certain temperature, it was too cold to be out there. But for things like rain, we still might be able to get them out there as much as possible.
Will there be tables and chairs in those tents at all or is, are you just seeing open space?
It's however the teacher wants to use it, you know.
I mean, but it's additional furniture. If the teacher wants to have workspaces out there, not movement spaces, that's additional furniture for the district, right?
I, I think they have, I don't believe so. I believe that they have extra furniture in the building, am I correct, Ace?
Yeah, we have, we have plenty of furniture. The, the likelihood though is that we'd ask teachers or kids to bring out whatever chair they're using just so that we don't have to worry about disinfecting or cleaning in between uses.
That's gonna be tough come winter time.
Yep.
Yeah, or cold weather.
Or fall.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I guess, I guess my question is, Jeff, if, if you are possibly gonna change your plan after you've discussed with the, the other groups, what, what would be different than what you, the plan that you've already presented?
The only difference really would be is, is the hybrid model, which seems to be the.
The two days on?
The hiccup, no, so the, we, we picked the hybrid model and it seems to be where the miscommunication was. And, you know, I'm, I'm sure there was something in there and but what we picked and what we chose is an actual 50 50 combination of the full end and the hybrid. And it was based on, on a European model, it was based on a model that was developed when the, you know, the, they faced this pandemic before we did. And so what they did is they tried to find a hybrid that puts students in front of teachers as much as possible. But at the same time, would sort of trace the path of the virus. And so their original motto, it was a four and 10. So they went to school full end for four days. And then essentially they did remote for, from that Friday to the next Friday. So this is essentially 10 days of self quarantine. It's not the 14 days that's usually recommended, but it gives you enough time so that you're always in this cycle of, you know, five days of, of full in front of teachers or four days in that case, we picked five. And then another nine days, we had a five and nine. So another nine days where students were learning remotely. Yeah, but they're also at home. So the chances are if there's an issue, it would turn up there. And then, you know, then you could kind of trace it back to find out what you had to do if you had to go to full remote. The other advantage it has as a, as a cohort is that, as one of these cohort models is that there's never a time where a, a student doesn't have a teacher in front of them. When, when the teacher, when, when they're in school, the teachers are right in front of them. When they're in a remote model, the teachers are interacting virtually with them. That's not true of most other cohort models and they're not the ones I can think of. If you have a cohort A and a cohort B, we don't have double teachers. So when a teacher's teaching one cohort, there's another, there's another cohort at home that's sort of learning on their own. You know, teachers can't be two places at once. So that means they teach for a couple of days or three days, whatever it is. They give assignments that the student works on. That same teacher is working with another group, they can't be with that student. That's why we picked that model. But again, so that's the answer, that's the long answer. The short answer is that's the part that, that they seem to have an issue with. So that's the one we'll, we'll take a look at.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
I have a question. I know some of the classrooms have tables in them. I'm wondering, do we have enough desks just for the six foot distancing? How, how will that be addressed?
Ace just lost power, so I'll take that one because he and I have talked about it a zillion times. His plan is to take all of those tables out and strictly move to, to desks. He's got more than enough to do it. So he's comfortable with the desk. We're gonna miss those tables, but it's one of the changes we'll need to make.
Thanks, John.
Is Cliff still on the line?
I don't know.
Just want to make sure he has a chance to ask questions if he's still on, but I don't hear him. Could I, could I ask a, a very particular question here because I haven't, I don't think I understand what's going on with the pre-K. The, the, the distancing measurements for pre-K were not included in the chart that I could see. So I'm wondering how distancing works in the pre-K classroom. And then there was something there about how that if the school closes down due to COVID, parents can still opt in to bring their children to the program? I was confused by that. Can, can someone clarify for me how pre-K is gonna work?
I can talk about it here in Berlin. I can talk about it here in Berlin. Um, for us, our pre-K classes are, are nine kids. So in terms of spacing. Even though there's no specific pre-K recommendation, we're a really good place. You know, it's a very small number of kids. Now that's, you know, kids and square feet, keeping pre-K students apart is gonna be a whole separate discussion. Um, in terms of the COVID thing, Karen can correct me if I'm wrong. They're talking children with those high needs. As long as it's not a statewide lockdown, as long as, so let's say Berlin Memorial had a few cases and Jeff decides to close just my school. We would still bring in, after cleaning obviously, those high needs. And because our preschool is an integrated preschool with some high need students, those kids would still get serviced.
So why, why would you bring in those students but not other students?
Recommendation from the Department of Education.
But, uh, but I don't understand. If it's, Billy's not clean enough for everybody to return, why would it be clean enough for those students to return?
We won't make them, we would, they would leave until we get that worked out. Um, and then, and then bring them back. And if we couldn't, we wouldn't. I mean, that's, that would be a goal, but. You know, certainly if we didn't think it was safe, we wouldn't bring them back. We don't have a cut in stone, like, you know, you're coming back tomorrow. We would clean the building and we'd make a decision.
Everybody to return then, Jeff? I don't understand.
Cause there's typically a fourteen day quarantine period.
So you, you want to keep everybody else home for fourteen days, but not those students?
Those kids are just, and this is my understanding, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is those kids would be monitored. But because of their special needs, would, we would be required to bring them back.
Yeah.
And I think the more likely one possibly, Susan, is that if we go back a step. And the governor says schools are closed down, they would still like us to try and prioritize some of the high needs kids. Including preschool students because it's so difficult for them to learn online and to really access education. So even if the schools were closed down by the government, they'd like us to try and prioritize those students.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for clarifying. It raises questions for me about the safety. Safety for those students and teachers, obviously. Um, so it's.
And the biggest problem in those schools, Susan, is that it's not when they're in the classes because they're, you know, they, they're isolated with one group. It's when they take the buses in. So if, if we don't pick up by grade level. So, you know, you have a, a fifth grader and a fourth grader and a second grader. It would be, it would be almost impossible if a fifth grader got sick to, to, to now try to trace it back. It's pretty much the entire school. So. You know, e- even though we're trying to, you know, try to be as safe as possible and keep them in groups. The chances are if one kid gets sick, you, you would have to close the school. It'd be almost impossible to, to, to not. You know, to, to go back and figure out all of the connections between that, that student had.
So that, that leads me to my, uh, another question I have here, which is about the metrics you're going to use for determining when to switch. Between these different models. And I, I've heard you say if one student. In the school gets sick, the entire school is, you're anticipating you'll close. And, and then, uh, if you, I'll bet you to speak to that in a minute, but also how do you decide then when to go to one of the other models? How do you determine your change, when and why you change?
Well, that's the, I mean, it's gonna be a local decision. Uh, you know, I think the, uh, Department of Education said they were gonna come out with some guidance, but. They always rarely revoke, um, uh, revert back to local guidance. And for me, it's, it's one person in the school. I mean, I, I don't think you go beyond that.
To close the school, but then what about i- if you're going from face to face to hybrid to remote? Remote back to hybrid, remote back to face to face. How do you make those calls?
Well, see, you know, that, that's the other issue. This, the three models, we had to put the three models together. Cause the Commissioner of Education, it was kind of still in flux and they weren't sure what they were gonna recommend. And so it just ended up in three models. The chances are if you're face to face and somebody gets, this is my, this is my metric. If you're face to face and somebody gets sick, you have to go to remote. You know, and, and if, let's say we, let's say we were using the mo- the hybrid model I just explained to you. You know, the full end for a week and full off for a week. You could phase it back in and you could keep those students off those nine days. And then, you know, possibly go another week, so have two weeks off. That's a full fourteen days. And then phase it back in one week on, one week off, using that hybrid until you're sure, and then go to a full end again. But chances are, you, you'd probably skip right over. You, you, I mean, you're essentially either, you, you either in, if someone gets sick, you're out. You, you, you know what I mean? You're not gonna, you can't, you can't, it's, as I explained, it's very difficult to isolate. Isolate one student in the school. It would make no sense, especially since we have a, you know, we have a remote model. Why would you, why would, I wouldn't take the chance. And, and you know what? I based that on, I looked at some of the research from Europe and. It was all over the place. In some, in some countries, it was one case in the school. Some of it had a, you know, a trigger of five cases in the school. So I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a right answer to it. You know, I think it's just whatever you feel comfortable with.
And what about the, the communication model around this? Um, my understanding is that the schools are expected to kind of pivot on a dime here. That in, in a day's, with a day's notice, they should be able to move from one model to the other, to another. What about, what about the families that have to suddenly accommodate kids being home? In that short time, uh, or the community needing to know what's happening there? What, how, how does that work?
Well, once we get all this sorted out, and I'm sure this is gonna be a question, and, and it comes up next week or this week. And just like any other school, they're gonna have to pivot. I mean, if he, if there's a kid who's sick, test positive. You have to close the schools down. Uh, you know, I don't think there's a way around it. I mean, they just have to be aware that that's gonna happen. That we continue to monitor cases. We continue to monitor the health of our students and our, our, um, our staff. And if someone gets ill, then was a positive case, then we need to shut the schools down.
Families will need to think of it almost like, uh, when a snow day gets called or a snow week gets called. If there's a bad blizzard, they. They just have to be able to, or they have to think ahead about what their backup plans are going to be if students are suddenly home.
Yeah, and you know, we'll have to figure out. I mean, we could, we could probably develop a warning system in which if a student was. What, had signs but hadn't tested positive, we could let, you know, the principals could send something out saying. This is, this is where we are. So, you know, just think about it. No different than me. You know, I always try to call a snow day the night before. So because I know parents have to kind of try to work things out. Speaking of snow days, there won't be any snow days this year, so.
Not in the calendar, right?
I, Suz, I just want to make a quick, quick statement there. You know, I think, um, you know, one area that I, I found challenging during this entire process is. With the lack of direction and commitment from the state, the governor and the Department of Education. You know, the community and parents have to be, have to be in the understanding mode of that. We're being asked to be very nimble and provide a very flexible and. Plan that allows for just what you're talking about, the movement from one plan to another. Because of that lack of commitment from the state, parents are as well are put in a position where they need to plan for multiple options as well. This isn't just about asking your school to be prepared for, uh, planning for multiple options. It's an unfortunate situation that we're all going to be put in where we have to have multiple plans behind the scenes for that. And there's ways around that, and I think the state could be doing a better job, um, pointing in the direction and allowing for. Districts to, uh, be able to, you know, have more firm decisions and that stuff, but you know. That, I, I agree with you. That's a, that's a frustrating part to me because I think that is just something that, uh, parents are gonna have to prepare for. Uh, as we move through, through some of these plans.
Our parent. Getting ahead of this stuff. So maybe that's something we can, we can talk to the parent group about. They've been working on a communication pieces. So maybe that's something we can, we can talk about. I haven't given it much thought, so.
Jeff, I, I appreciate your, um, your willingness to look at and be flexible with your presented. Hybrid model, and I think the work and the feedback that will come from, uh, a work with the, um. The teachers' union, uh, with the community over the next few days, I think will help us resolve some of that. I think it addresses really what I see as two of the higher and major concerns going into all of these plans in the back to school process, which is. One, obviously, in a full back to school mode, um. You know, utilizing which statistics to determine distances and health and safety precautions, but more importantly. Um, the question around a teacher's ability to deliver an effective model of teaching in that model. I can understand the idea of masks and, and, and spacing and all that good stuff, but you know, you know, we have to. We have to work on, is that, is, is that an effective mod from a teaching perspective? And then, uh, secondly, um. You know, obviously, um, the question around, um. The difference in the types of models of a hybrid situation, the weekend, week out versus the cohort model and the, in the. You know, the, the multiple points of, of contacts and, and cross contamination, right? So I think those are things that work out. So I appreciate, um. I appreciate your willingness to work on that particular hybrid model, and I think we'll be successful there. That was just one statement I wanted to make. Another statement I wanted to make, um, which is gonna be followed by a question, which sort of comes together is I. As a school committee member, I think it's also our obligation to look at the big picture. Uh, it's not necessarily. I'm a hundred percent concerned about health and safety and getting students the best education possible. Um, but there's also impact of every decision we make, uh, for the school district for subsequent years as well. Um, and a couple of things that have concerned me, and, and I think back to, uh, the end of last year. You know, and one of the things personally that I really found really, really hard, uh, about the end of last year was. Um, what was lost by some students, particularly our senior students, right? Um, and the impact that that remote learning had on that and our inability to provide some of those really important things. To our students that they, is gone from them forever now. They'll never get that back. Um, so, you know, I really think about the impact of the. And I know there's a lot of talk about potentially looking at, you know, whatever you read this day and whatnot about. You know, even looking at a full remote plan. Um, and I know from, uh, a lot of perspectives, the full remote plan for the entire year, and what concerns me is the impact. Of what that has on other things, the, the loss of sports, the loss of, um, after school activities. Um, the arts and sciences activities that kids do after school, the proms, the graduations and all that stuff. And when we make a decision, and if we made a decision, we end up as if we go full remote, that, those are impacts that affect. Uh, a group of students that I, you know, for me is just, is concerning, and I think we need to take it into consideration. I'll let you comment on that, but my, my question of that, keeping in mind the idea of impact is on a broader spectrum. And I, I talk about this a lot, uh, during school committees, and I share this a lot about how. We are a small community and what a difference a small percentage of students can make in this community. You know, ten students here represents a percentage that can affect a lot of different things. Budget scenarios, um, grant scenarios. And I think no matter which way we go, whether you went, I think you're gonna have a subset of the community that. Maybe wants their children to go back to school and a subset that doesn't. And that is everybody's individual prerogative, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't get involved in those families' decisions. But with that being said, if we lose a small percentage of our community. Uh, and of our school community, that can have dramatic impacts on our budgets, our Title I, uh, all types of grants that we get. And as we've seen over this last town meeting. Our school budget is very, very tight and that impacts that. It impact, impacts staffing roles as we go forward. A loss of students involves staffing roles, right? And we just work so hard to add additional staff into our community. You know, I want to work in the right direction. Can you share with me, uh, information you have, feedback you have, any type of analytics you have? That, um, can speak to, say we will, we'll put ourselves in a full remote model and that was safest decision. And we had a subset of parents who decided to pull their kids out and send them to a private school, right? And we saw what happened this year with, uh, a number of students moving to Aspen Vocational, right? And how that impacted our school budget. It could go the other way, right? If we went to an in-school model, we had a large percent of the parents pull their kids out of school and homeschool, right? That dramatically affects the state funding that we get next year. Can you share in, information around that, please?
Um, thanks, Jim. A four remote model would be a disaster. Absolute disaster. The commissioner is clear. There's a full remote model. There'll be no sports. There'll be no extracurricular activities. He said, there's no way he's gonna be able to justify if there's a full remote. If that's what, if that's what's being pushed, all of that stuff is gone. Um, funding may be reduced. They're talking about sending funding to parents to, so that they can have their. Their children attend private schools and parochial schools. It hasn't happened yet. Um, but I think people don't realize that our budget in large part, there's some other things like the wealth formula, but. It's tied to the amount of kids we have in this district. And when we lose those kids, and we're having a little bit of an enrollment spike, but we're not seeing it now. It's tough to justify keeping extra staff. We have class sizes that are twelve kids. It's great for students. It's great for students. But at some point, when people, when, 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 when remote learning starts to become a better option for parents. Than having a, a, a teacher in front of them, that becomes a problem. So. Uh, you know, I don't think there's anything more valuable than having a teacher in front of a student. But a four remote model would be a, an absolute disaster. Uh, um, about a week ago, when I was thinking about, you know, what I want to do with this, I started hearing things from teachers and, and. But you know what? It's things from kids that really get me. I mean, tho- those are the things that, I mean, this is why we all do that. All of these teachers here. I want to read this. Starts out, hope you're having a great summer. So we already know it's a kid. She introduces herself. As a counselor, we are beginning to plan for the fall events, and one of the biggest events is homecoming dance. This year is full of uncertainties. However, we are wondering if you are able to provide any clarity. On home, on homecoming plans. Will it be possible to schedule homecoming in the fall, or should we push it to the winter? We are trying to come up with as many plans as possible, and any ideas and suggestions are welcome and very much appreciated. You know, this kind of stuff kills me. And maybe we should take an example from this seventeen-year-old kid. Who, all she wants to do is have a normal year. She doesn't want to be remote. She wants to be with her friends. She wants to have homecoming dance. And you know what she thinks? She thinks we wanted to have it too. So. I hope the teachers keep this in mind when they, when they start thinking about. You know, for remote all the time. I think remote's necessary. I mean, if someone gets sick, you, you can't be in those schools, but. You gotta be careful what you wish for. You know, there's, there's, there's a lot that's gonna be tied to that.
Jeff. Hello, Jeff Mark Johnson. I have a quick question if you can hear me.
Yes, although you're muted and I still hear you. No, I can't.
Uh, Jim, you're muted.
So my quick question here is how much online instruction will, or can we expect for kids at home? There's a lot of talk about, you know, the high school kids, and that's a fair thing to discuss about what they miss out on the homecoming and proms and all those things. But what about the younger kids? Uh, you know, I have a first grader coming up here. He, I, he can't just, I can't just stick her in front of a laptop and, and, and a screen. You know, last year kindergarten was tough. Miss Pasquale was fantastic, but it was still a lot of. Instr- a lot of hands-on learning, you know, while I'm trying to work from home and trying to provide for my family. What is that gonna look like? What is the learning gonna look like remote or even hybrid for the younger kids who need to learn the? who need to learn the reading, who, who can't connect to a web meeting on their own? They need assistance.
Jeff, let me, can I, Jeff, let me take that question, please. Mark, when, uh, Mark, I apologize if you weren't on at the beginning of the meeting and I've updated a couple of times. We're not taking questions this evening from, uh, the community. There is a number of ways for you to get your questions to the school committee and to the administration. There's a group of parents that are, uh, now working on a document that has a number of questions that'll be presented. You are able to send your question to Kristy Turgeon, who is the, uh, Jeff's secretary. And I provided her email address in a number of different ways. There will be a town hall Thursday evening for, uh, parents to ask questions, just like you're asking. And as well, we have a school committee meeting on Friday where public comments will be welcome as well during that school committee. I think it's an excellent question. I do appreciate you asking it. Do not, it's not, this isn't a personal thing to not let you answer the question. We haven't allowed any community questions during this. I'm not specifically singling you out, but, uh, we're not going to be accepting those questions that evening. So we're asking, uh, parents and community members to stay muted at this time. I apologize.
I had a question about the remote. When I was reading the entry, the plans, did I understand correctly, even if when we are doing remote, the staff and teachers will be expected to go into their classrooms and teach remotely from their classroom? Did I understand that correctly?
That's correct. They weren't in class last time because we were under a, um, we were under a closed order from the governor. So.
Jeff, can you, on that, on that topic, can you, I guess I'd like you to add maybe a little color as to why you made that decision to have, to have teachers come in. You know, I think you spoke, uh, and as well as Carol spoke, uh, earlier about the benefit to higher need students in that face-to-face activity, but can you add any further color to, uh, why you are proposing that?
Well, I, a couple of things. I think, one, I mean, I talked to the principals and, and I said, well, you know, what, what do you think? And they, they said, well, you know, all of this stuff is here, um, including their colleagues. So I think it's an opportunity not for them to just have, do the remote learning from their classroom, but also to keep in contact and be with their colleagues. So I think it's, you know, I know for myself that during, during the, um, closure last year, that I came into the office a couple of times a week, just so I could continue to feel connected to it. And I think most people feel that way. And I don't have like a lot of stuff here. I don't have a lot of like teaching props or anything. So I think it would just be, it would just be good all around. Maybe it would be good for the learning process.
Okay. And I don't think it's a question of, uh, cause I, and I appreciate you as well asking that question because I was going to ask, uh, the same question around that because I know, I don't, you know, I look at that topic as I don't think it is a question around, um, teacher's ability. I look at it as it's not necessarily a teacher's ability of whether or not they can deliver a successful education from their home, from their car or from there. I think great teachers can be great teachers no matter where you stick them. But I'm really, it's an interesting topic and I'm interested to see if it comes up as we speak with the union because I think, um, you know, I'm, I'm interested to see if that's an area where, um, teachers feel there is a benefit, uh, particularly, you know, I'll speak for myself, particularly I have a student, that who definitely, uh, is on, requires some, you know, additional learning in different areas. And I, and I can extremely express my sincere belief that that student would gain an extreme amount of educational benefit from, if it's an hour in person a week, right? Not even a half an hour in person a week. So I'm interested to see as we progress through this, you know, if that is an area of, you know, flexibility, uh, for teachers and the administration to be able to come to agreement on, to allow for that, because I think it's an important, important piece of the puzzle, particularly with our higher, our higher need students. And particularly in the beginning, as we catch up, uh, we bring those students back up to speed desperately will need it to start off this year.
I have a, another question. I know other schools are doing stuff differently and I don't know how to articulate it with their HVAC. Is that something that the school is doing or looking into?
Yeah, well, look, we did, um, we've done a couple, um, just, yeah, air quality studies. Now we did one at BMS last year because they, they thought they might have mold. There's a lot of water behind there. And, um, now like I said, I have asthma, I have a lot of allergies and, and, uh, I thought there might be something there too. So we did the study and it was fine, but that's different than a, um, you know, an airflow kind of study. So, um, we're going to look into that also.
Okay, thank you.
The, um, this is really a question so much as a, just a concern or something that's on my mind. Safety, I, and I've said, I've said this to you, Jeff, but I haven't said this to our, my colleagues here. It's, it's natural that we should be spending a great deal of time figuring out the safety issues in each of these models, particularly face-to-face model. And that a lot of our questions and efforts should be directed towards, towards safety first, which I think you've done, uh, you, you collectively have done a great job really thinking through incredibly complex scenarios here, actually. When this, when the guidance, uh, or directives first came down from the department, I remember feeling like this is, this is nuts. You know, this is never, this is, how can you ever make any of this work? It's crazy the number of factors that number balls in the air that you have to figure out and put together. It's, it's, it's immense. Um, so I give first, uh, credit to everybody who's worked on this and put hours and hours to figure out how to nail some of this down. It's really quite astounding. But the second, the second tier that I'm, I'm concerned about is, um, what, uh, Tara said in the letter from BBEA and which I, I was talking to you about, Jeff, just the other day. And that's the, uh, how time and quality of learning are impacted by all of this. And I, I am, will argue that none of these scenarios, the face-to-face, any hybrid or any remote situation is, is anything we've ever taught in before. None of this is familiar ground. We don't really know how to do the highest quality teaching and learning in any of these scenarios. And, um, I mean, we, we risk going back to 1950 when we stand in front of a classroom of kids sitting in desks separated, uh, you know, in rows and you, you can't have them collaborate. You can't kneel down next to them and look at their work with them. I mean, you, you, you really risk, uh, teaching, learning, going back decades. So, um, my, one of my concerns is, and it may not be the conversation right now, but I'm putting it on the table because I'm going to come back to it, is how to make sure that the staff has adequate, robust structures and time to delve deeply into exploring what quality teaching and learning looks like in these different scenarios they're being asked to move across. This is not a simple task. It, it takes collective commitment and support and time and experimentation and innovation to figure out how to do this. And I want to make sure the system is also paying attention to the teaching and learning side of this equation because I think we're walking into brand new territory here.
Sorry. Thank you, Susan. Sorry. I didn't know if I was on mute or not. Um, do we have, uh, any other questions or comments?
Uh, I saw a comment that I, I don't know, how are you going to keep K through two social distancing? I'm really, I'm trying to think about how to, how that would be, you know, K through two. I mean, to get these kids to not be close together. That seems like a really hard job for those teachers. That's just more, that's a comment. It's not a question.
And it has, has there been any conversation? Should we be, I'm interested in input from teachers and parents and staff here. Has there been conversation about requiring masks for K and one? I, I, I'm kind of interested in that myself, but I would like to know what other people think about that.
I did, I had a, um, a question from a parent in K. Who, uh, because the guidance from the Department of Ed says K and one, it's recommended but not required. And I think that's what's in the plan. We just, we just sort of copied that out. And, um, their position was that it, they believed it should be required. And I don't think we thought much about it beyond that, but, um, I don't know. I, I, we probably would be better off asking a K or one teacher who deals with those, those students and see what they think. I mean, I, you know, I'd be willing to, I, I don't have an opinion on it. I really don't. I mean, I think we need to. And I, I agree with.
I, I think the parents also, the parents might also have important information there too because they, in some many cases, may have already been in having their children wear masks and have experience with that. I just lost my other thought. Sorry. That'll come back.
I don't think it's impossible. I, I've been reading a lot of the studies from overseas and there are countries. You know, I still wonder why I'd see, you know, these, these pictures from like Japan, South Korea, these kids have masks on. And it, and it turns out that they actually, every year during cold cross season, they wear masks. All of them wear masks. And so it's new to us, but in, in other places, kids wear masks and certain parts of the year, all the time, and they always have. And, you know, well, that's necessary. I mean, I, I think it can be, I mean, they can, they can learn to do it.
It, it's definitely going to be, it's hard to say it won't be a topic, Susan, right? I agree with you. It's hard to say, um, the problem is, uh, the challenge, I think, is it is, it is a topic that probably will come up as we work through, uh, our discussions with the teachers. And when we narrow down towards how we go to our hybrid model, because there are a lot of questions that come up, right? Is it, um, it's a balance of the balance with that younger age is the balance of what is the safety impact versus the ability to teach and manage that age group under that many students with the masks on, right? So, you know, those are things that might get solved if we, uh, if we start to adapt to a particular cohort model that allows for maybe less students, if there's less students, if we, you know, for instance, some of those, those cohorts in other districts that are doing the two and two, right? So the class sizes might be smaller. That might change a teacher, I think that might change a teacher's answer as to whether or not the management of that age group with masks on is easier or not. And then you're able to weigh the safety precautions of a, right? So I think we'll have those, I, I'm guessing we'll have those discussions as we narrow down, the scopes of those things. And then, you know, the other variable is, I think, parents of children that age look at that completely differently, right? That's an age group where parents will struggle with the challenge of wanting their child to get the, an education somewhat in person, but challenged with whether or not they think they're a first grader, will keep that mask on or be able to wear that mask, right? So I think we're going to get probably feedback from that perspective as well. So I think it's a great topic and I, I have a feeling it'll, it'll, that'll be an area that we start to work out in the next couple of days. But there are guidelines out there, right? The challenge is there are guidelines that were given by Department of Education and that's what our district, that's what Jeff proposed in his plan.
Right, right. But we have, we do have local decision-making we can make. So we should, you know, just keep that in mind.
Um, can anyone speak to how, you know, we talked about what using our CARES Act to help supply, um, tutors and how we can kind of, um, uh, other teachers can kind of help co-teach or help? Can, can someone speak more to that about how we can, and do our best to enhance the learning? With, with these plans?
Charlie, we're in the process of interviewing.
So, sorry, say that again. I didn't hear that.
Angela asked about, um, uh, us hiring tutors to help teachers during the entry phase. Wanted to know a little bit more about that.
Yeah, Angela, one of the, one of the requirements of folks we would hire as tutors is that they have to have certification. They have to have licensure as teachers. And the folks that we're looking at now, we're trying to match with a particular age level. So these are folks coming in who have that background experience already. So we're hoping to get extra hands to be able to work with those students, work with those teachers, on intervention pieces in particular, maybe oversee them and some of the, and some of the practice work that they're doing to, to strengthen their skills. For example, I think in mathematics, to work with the Title I tutors or ELA specialists that we have and be able to, to just provide those kinds of individualized instruction to those students. So that's how I see the value for those, for those tutors coming in.
And Angela, originally, when we, we were thinking about hiring these tutors, we thought at some point, um, you know, not right away, but as, as we get going, we, we, we need to close this gap because we really haven't, we really haven't finished out last year. And I think it puts teachers at a disadvantage if we haven't closed, if we haven't closed that, that gap. And, um, so our idea was to bring these tutors in for, you know, six weeks, eight weeks, just to help teachers. So they would have an extra set of hands in the classroom, just to help them as they're going through that process. And one of the other things we said they could help with is, um, you know, for the first couple of months, the gaps they would be closing is just, it's not just, but ELA and, um, mathematics. The other gaps that close as they, you know, cover the subjects later on. But we felt that was critical that we, um, close those gaps in those two areas and then move on to the next grade. Which again, we'll be behind, but.
I, Jeff, I just wanted to add one more piece to that. I thi- I think a lot of that too, and how we utilize the, the tutors is, it will depend on the data we have collected on those students when we issued the assessments. So I think that's going to really help drive how we, how we, how we utilize them and how the teachers feel they should be utilized as well to support them. Also, and also to the work we have, as I mentioned before, from the specialists, ELA specialists, the math specialist, their guidance as well around those students.
Jeff, I want to make sure I understand, to go back to a very particular topic here. I understand the, um, distancing in the elementary classrooms. I, I need to make sure I understand the distancing in the, in the Tonto classrooms where, um, the, this classes that may go into, if I under, if I'm understanding this right, the classes that may go into a room may vary in size, right? So, um, I saw numbers there for three-foot distancing and six-foot distancing. And I was not sure what size the classes were that were going to be going into any of those classrooms.
At the, at the middle high school?
Yeah.
Well, you know, all classrooms are designed to be, you know, roughly eight, eight, eight fifty, eight, eight hundred and seventy-five square feet. I mean, classroom size may, might not look like they're the same, but, you know, if you go down a row of classrooms, especially modern classrooms, they're pretty much the same, they're pretty much the same kind of size. And I know that, go ahead.
Now, well, what size classes are, are you planning to accommodate in those, in those standard sized rooms then?
I, I don't know if Diane wants to jump in here, but she did. I, I don't know if Diane wants to jump in here, but she did a very similar study that the, you know, all the principals did the same study. And I don't know, Diane, you wanna just touch on, because I know you have some extra spaces you wanna utilize also.
Sure, absolutely. So again, it's, you know, we have class sizes that range from, you know, some AP classes that have ten students in them, to some history classes that may have twenty-eight or, or twenty-nine students in them. So the calculation with the three foot distance, um, you know, we got right, anywhere from twenty-one to twenty-four, because we do have some classrooms that are different sizes. Um, and six feet were right around twelve. Now, what we would have to do with those classes, let's say a history class that has, you know, twenty-eight students, we would have to schedule that class in a larger space. You know, for instance, the auditorium.
Okay.
Um, we may have to utilize our multipurpose room.
To achieve, to achieve what distance?
Not, not necessarily to, to, you know, to achieve a certain distance, it's, it's to fit, you know, the number of students that are enrolled in the class in there, given whether we are three feet or six feet.
So, so if I understand you right, a, a space would be adequate if you could fit that class into a space at three-foot distance between students?
It, it, it depends on the enrollment in, in the class. Like right now, you know, in looking at our schedule, we do have some classes that even at, even at three feet, um, we could not fit everyone in the class in a regular-sized classroom, right?
Susan, I think her study was included in there, I think I had them. Those were internal documents, those were just studies I wanted the principals to do to see what our next step would be. So I think it's included there. If it's not, I'll get you a copy, but she did a very similar study. They did every single classroom.
Yes, I saw the classroom data, but I did, I didn't, unless I missed it, which I could have. I didn't see the size of the classes in those spaces. So what, what I heard you say, Diane, is that they, those classes might range from ten to twenty-nine students. And so it's hard, like, I, I really, I, I have a lot of trouble supporting, putting students into a class at three-foot distances, because we can fit them at three feet. I don't think that's okay. So I guess what, what's missing.
You're going either.
That's good. So what's missing for me is how, how those classes of different sizes can be accommodated in the spaces that you've measured out there at a reasonable distance.
Some, some may not be able to, given, you know, given the restrictions. So therefore, we'd utilize additional spaces in order to fit, like, like I, as I said, the auditorium, which is a, which is a much larger, obviously, much larger space allowing for, you know, twenty-nine or thirty students to spread out.
Yeah, yes, I, I get that, and that's, that's good to know. I just wanted to make sure that when we're, when we're figuring out what adequate space is for them to spread out, that we're, we're thinking of five and six feet to spread out, not three feet. That's, that's my concern. I mean, that's obviously a decision that has to be made ultimately. Like, may, maybe that class has to be broken down into two classes, for example, and not be such a large class, that would be another kind of alternative. But I, I am concerned that the, whatever configuration we land on for these different classes not be at that three-foot distance, I just feel that's not adequate myself. And I don't know, you need more feedback from the committee at large, Jeff, on the distancing space, but that's my two cents. I, I don't wanna see three-foot distances in whatever kind of accommodations we make for classes. I'd rather have classes cut down in size, or, you know, run double, whatever, you know, different ways to solve that.
I, I agree with you, Susan, about the three feet. But I don't think, I don't think Jeff is saying that, that he doesn't want three feet either.
Right, yes.
This seems really tough, guys. That is a, it's just a tough, tough situation we're all in. And I know that there's, um, I know that there's, you know, t- teachers and parents that, you know, are wishing to student phases, you know, do remote, then do the hybrid, then, you know. Is, I mean, is that something that you even thought about, Jeff, before? I mean, obviously you've thought about, you've done a ton of research, and I know you have. But I, I just know from hearing from community, and I know other teachers, I'm just, I have to throw that out there just to, you know, regardless of, you know, what everybody feels, and what, everybody has their own opinion. You know, you put on one news station, they'll say one thing. Put on another news station, they say the other thing. But, you know, is that something that you'd be opposed to, Jeff? I mean, just the, the whole, because that's how we started this in phases, you know? And I know based on your data that we are in a situation right now where we can, that you feel comfortable, and I know that some of the, because I do worry about, you know, the teachers too. I know we've been talking about the kids quite a bit, and they are number one. But, you know, we also take into consideration the, you know, what the, what the teachers are, just the feedback from the teachers. So I just posed that question, you know, was that even a thought to do the, you know, the phase thing of remote, and then? Hate to put you on the spot, sorry. I think you muted, Jeff.
Oh, yeah.
I think he started. Jeff, you're muted. Sorry, man.
Now I have to remember what happened. Well, I, I did think about that stuff, but not really from the safety standpoint, because I think the calculations we did, I mean, we based it on data, and it just pull that stuff out of the, out of the sky. So I think from the safety standpoint, it is. I think the issue for me, and this, this is really just a personal, personal issue, that, you know, none of that stuff is gonna work if they don't wear it. And I know for me, with asthma, like if I go on, those, those elementary school classrooms at the beginning of the year are extremely hot. And so I, it did cross my mind that, you know, they're hot when you don't have a mask on. So I did think, and that's why, you know, like the ten days, you know, I was hoping that, I was hoping that the NTA and this commissioner worked something out there, so I wouldn't have to deal with it. Then it gives ten days when, when, like, they don't have to be in those buildings. They're very, very hot. So, and then you have a mask on a kid. When I know that sometimes a guy start getting panic attacks, because like, no, listen, I can't breathe. And especially it happens in the warm weather, and we, and, you know, because we did it. We, you know, we, we, we were, did a retreat, and it was very warm, and we, and we kept the masks on. So, no, I am conscious of it, and, you know, I'm flexible with that stuff. Again, I, not from the safety standpoint, if you can keep the mask on the kid's face.
Right.
But if they're sweating, and then, you know, they're tugging at it, it doesn't matter if they're three feet or six feet, it's not gonna work.
Right.
I think these are the things we need to think about. So that's the long answer, so the short answer is about the phasing. Yeah, I have thought about it, it's not in the plan, but I have thought about it from, from that, you know, from my own perspective, of what I would, like, what would happen to me if it were, if I were in that classroom.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I mean, of course, I, I know everybody wants the kids to go back to school. I mean, and you mentioned this, you know, Jimmy mentioned the sports thing, and, you know, I got kids that play sports that were looking forward to, I mean, it's, it's a tough situation. So I just had to bring that up as, just hearing from teachers and the other members in the, in the, in the community, so, but, um, this is tough, Jeff, it's tough.
And, and you know, here's the other thing, you know, when next to these fields, they're full of our kids playing.
Yeah.
Three feet, they're lucky if they're three inches from each other.
Yeah, right.
You know, and they're all out there every day. So, you know, we're talking about them being in the classroom, well, they're out here. So at some point.
But it is outside.
You know, you gotta think to yourself, you know, then, maybe they're not practicing that stuff when they're, they're tough to get kids to do that stuff.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think there's a risk, there's a risk in all of this. Forget about the distances, there's a, there's, there's risk involved in all of this. I think we present something, that we do the best we can to make it the safest environment for our students and our staff. And ultimately, the parents need to make the decision if they feel comfortable enough to send their kids to school.
Right.
I, I, I think we're talking about right. I think we're, it is gonna, no matter which direction you go, it's a phased, it's a phased plan, right? I don't think anybody is under the impression that we're gonna be able to get through this school year under one methodology or one plan. I spoke earlier, there's a variable that none of us can control and is going to continue to evolve, which is gonna make all of those plans need to be, you know, readapted and looked at throughout the year. So, you know, I, I think from some standpoint, we are gonna be doing a phased approach. We just, we're having a discussion around how to begin that phased approach, right? And what's the safest way to do that, and what's in the best interest of the students and the teachers.
And I think the committee also needs to keep in mind that we don't even have all the guidance from the Department of Ed.
No, I know that, I know you guys.
There's still a few things out there, you know, that, that we need to. As Carol mentioned, we, you know, we were supposed to have the guidance on the remote learning platform, and we don't have that yet. I didn't see it in my box at least, and Carol, Carol, I know Carol's been looking for it. And, and so was, is Paul, so.
We're not going back to school till September fourteenth, right? And a lot can change between now and September fourteenth, right? And I know this, regardless of where you are, I spend a lot of time on the MASC and on listservs and speaking with other school committee members from other districts. And regardless of which way they go, and what statistics, and at what date you pull the statistics, and there's always gonna be updated statistics, and I think it's important to follow statistics. September fourteenth is over a month away. Today's statistics aren't gonna be the same statistics a month from now, right? So I think we're working to put ourselves in a position to be in the best spot to send everybody in the right direction, healthy and safely. But this is gonna evolve, there's gonna be school committees, we're gonna have amendments, we're gonna have changes to these plans throughout our year, is my expectation. So, again, I talked about this earlier in the conversation, everybody, parents, community, teachers, everybody is going to have to expect to be, planning for multiple options as we go, go through the year.
I was just hoping, I didn't wanna interject, and I'm sorry, because my audio is pretty, you know, it's pretty touch and go at this point, as is my camera. But I am just a local parent, I'm a nurse practitioner, I've worked in the frontline since, and, you know, I think what would be nice is if a lot of parents kind of just considered objectively, there's been a lot of emergency daycare centers open this entire duration. You know, kids of the most highest-risk frontline workers that Baker had opened, and even some local, um, you know, whether it be in Auburn, I know one personally, where a few of the pediatricians I work with have sent their children. And, you know, the pretty astounding piece of this is there was zero outbreaks, and these children five and under work distancing or wearing masks in the beginning of this. You know, and I mean, I would be happy to try to pull some data from like the local Greendale Y. You know, the media swayed a lot, but I find that, you know, what's very reassuring is these centers have not had these outbreaks that you would imagine. You know, especially unmasked of high-risk workers in, you know, infant rooms, toddler rooms. And, you know, I think that alone is pretty reassuring, that with the guidance you guys have suggested. You know, I think that that's excellent guidance, and yet it even, you know, reassures us even more with, you know, I find that that's gonna be more successful in limiting outbreaks compared to some of the other centers. And I'm sure that the media and local news would be all over it if some of these were, you know, high-risk. I guess my concern is, I don't know if anybody has heard, or, you know, the Department of Health has really touched base with the childcare centers that have been open throughout, because a lot of them have been pretty big organizations.
Thank you, Chris, and I, I appreciate, I appreciate the feedback. It's excellent feedback, and what I, what I'd encourage you to do is share that again with us, please, on Thursday night at our town hall, where we'll be accepting comments and questions from parents. I'm trying to work through the process of this, and, again, I ask for the folks in the community to please keep yourselves on mute, and don't ask any questions and make any comments, we're not, that's not what tonight's purpose was for. Tonight's purpose was to educate everybody, and we'll be providing a number of ways for everybody to provide feedback moving forward. But I, I appreciate you speaking up, and thank you for that. Please, make sure you share that again on Thursday night, if you can.
Jim, last question.
Do what? Yep, great, Laurie.
When will, because I know a lot of people, you know, tuned in wanting to hear what the plan was, and, and things have changed and are rolling, but I'm just curious when the draft will be shared with the parents? Just so that they have a timeline where they, they think they, you know, where they can expect to see it?
The draft we talked about tonight, Laurie?
Yeah.
Christie, Christie posted it, it's on our website.
Oh, so it is available?
It is available, it's on our website. Anything we speak about, Laurie, in our meetings gets posted that, gets posted that day.
I'm sorry, I guess I wasn't clear, the hybrid model I thought was changing.
Yeah, that would be an amendment, I mean, we still have to work on that. So that, we, we, we haven't posted, because Carol and I have been doing some work with it, and we just sort of finished up the framework today. So that's, but the rest of it is there, so it's only the hybrid that's the, it's only the hybrid that would be the change. If there's, if there's any change, that would, that's what it would be.
But that will be by Friday, is that right, Jeff? Because we'll be voting at a meeting on Friday.
Correct.
So that will be available and posted on the website sometime on Friday?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
I'm trying to think of the timeline, yeah, I'm hoping before that.
So even though we are voting on Friday on, like, our recommendation, or what we approve, we are approving the plans, and, but none of, you know, as kind of Jim said, none of it is really binding per se, like how we wanna actually start September fourteenth. We might not start that way. I also just, I could be wrong, but that's kind of my understanding. But I guess I just wanna reiterate that none of us take this decision lightly. We are trying to be very thoughtful about it and not emotional about it. And I think it would be, sure, a lot easier, easy for us if the state just said, okay, here, you do, you do this. Your school, there's, all school districts are gonna do this. But that's why we're looking at the data metrics, that's why we're looking at what our two communities is happening in our two communities, and not what's happening in Indiana. I mean, we certainly, you wouldn't wanna hold a, a school district in Martha's Vineyard or something, or in Antucket, where it's very isolated to the same standards that a school in Boston might have to do. So that is where the local control comes in. I, I honestly don't like having to make this decision, but I, it gives me comfort to know of the other people on the committee, we're in this together, the whole community's in this together, and, you know, we're gonna do the best with a very bad situation, and you, we just deal with it the best we can.
Angela, just to be clear, there was a change this week, that the commissioner originally said that he wanted the submission of one pre-entry plan with the three models. That's what we worked on. And then this week, he said, just submit the model of the three models, just submit the one that you think you're gonna open with. And if you, if you have to have amendments, then contact me and let me know why. So I think, I think, so, you know, you can see the evolution of this, you know, six feet, three feet, three models, one model, just the one you open with, now you can edit. So, you know, I, I don't know what it'll be next week. But I, I, but I'll tell you what, I think the commission has been very good about saying, I know that these, that you had to do a lot of things in a short amount of time, and that a lot, and everybody didn't get input, and there'll be an editing process. Just sort of let us know what that is and what's happened. So, I mean, I certainly wouldn't wanna do it on October, that's, that's probably not a good career path. But, you know, I think to say we're just, you know, vote on the model that we agree that we're gonna open with. That's what, that's what I'm gonna. That's what, that's what I'm going to submit on the 10th.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions before we close out the subject? I just want to, you know, when we started this conversation, it was light behind Angela and now it's very dark behind Angela. And.
And my power is still not on.
We do have some votes that we have to get through in our business items. So I just wanted to take one last poll of the school committee to see if there was any further questions. We also, as a school committee, will be going into executive session after this. So as our night is, is long from over. So I just wanted to poll the, um, the committee once more to see if there were any other further questions at this time.
No, not, not right now. Thank you, everybody.
No, not right now.
Okay. So in, in, in closing on this topic, I just want to, as it relates to the process that, that we took this evening, I just want to be clear, um, you know, I recently sat through a partial, another school committee presenting their plans, a, a district around us, their plans for the upcoming year. And one of the things I noticed during that time is that, that district as well took the opportunity to not have a public discussion on their initial meeting where they were presenting their plans. They held it very much the same way we did. And so I didn't, I didn't, I didn't take the decision lightly on how to manage the communication and making sure every stakeholder involved in this process was given an opportunity to have their voice heard. So my, my goal, and I want to reiterate this, my goal in keeping tonight as an informational only session for folks to listen and have the school committee be able to interact was to be able to manage the process. And we're doing our best effort to make sure that over this next week, we provide as many opportunities for anyone who would like to share information. A lot of great information was getting shared across the chat initially. You know, one of the challenges I have with that is, is the management of that and ensuring that that information is delivered to the right people in the right way. And sometimes, you know, chat and that type of stuff, you will blow through a chat. It'll keep going and all that good stuff. So what I'm trying to do is make sure that the information is getting to everybody so that we can answer all the questions and everybody can have the most relevant information provided to them. So, you know, I'm sure many of you noticed that the chat session got, uh, got shut down this evening. I will tell you that that was a chair decision. That was my decision, a chair decision only to shut that down. I found it distracting and it took away from the purpose of what I wanted to accomplish in this meeting. I'm sure that will be for some folks challenging. And what I do is I, I love feedback on any way I can be better. My goal in why I volunteer my time for this community is to make this community better. So I appreciate any feedback that anybody wants to give to me as it relates to how this process has gone, any way I can get better. So you could find my email address is jspencer@bbrsd.org if you'd like to provide me feedback on whether it's the chat stuff or that stuff. I, I appreciate that. And I'm also willing to have a conversation with anybody who's concerned with my decisions around that stuff. Feel free. I encourage that type of stuff. So please don't hesitate to reach out. With that being said, I want to thank Jeff and I want to thank the administrative team for the time that, in the school committee, for the time that they, they put in this evening. I've spent a lot, had a lot of conversations with Jeff over this past month. And I can assure you, though we all may look at things in a different manner, I can assure you, every decision Jeff made and every step he took was absolutely in the best interest of our community, our students, our teachers, and trying to get to a, a point where we are delivering what is in the best interest of those students in the most safe and healthy manner. And, and I'm looking forward to working with all the stakeholders and groups in the next couple of days to get us narrowed down to where we present our recommended plan on Friday. So I appreciate all the hard work from anybody. And with that being said, um, I'm going to move to the last item of our agenda, which is business items. Item A is removed because I spoke early about that. We are moving our vote to Friday. So that will move to our Friday agenda. So item B is our school calendar that the school committee has had access to on our drive with the updated start of school date based on the 10 days from Department of Education delay or added for development at the beginning of the year. Do I have a motion or can I have a motion on item B as outlined?
I make a motion to accept the school count's calendar.
Susan seconded.
All right, Angela and Susan, thank you very much. Cliff is no longer with us, so we're not, unless he joined back. I didn't hear him on there. So Cliff's along with, so Susan.
I.
Angela?
I.
Keith?
I.
Lori?
I.
That's an I from, for myself. School item C is a vote on our school committee self-assessment report that we spoke about in our past meetings. Is there anything to be discussed on that particular business item?
Nothing new, except that we need to schedule probably a workshop time with Dorothy Presser at MASC to discuss our goals for this year, coming off of that self-assessment report.
Okay, I will work with Christie on dates. I'll reach out to Dorothy and I as well. I will get that updated in our school committee calendar as well.
Great, thank you. Motion to, if there's no further discussion, a motion to approve the school committee self-assessment report.
I'll second that. Angela?
Thank you both. Uh, Susan?
I.
Angela?
I.
Keith?
I.
Lori?
I.
It's an I for me as well. Item D is the approval of our Moses Reed Tyler Scholarship dispersants, dispersments.
Yes. So this was an interesting little addition to the scholarship applications, which we voted on in June. But after, after we voted on them, we received several more, uh, which came out. They were, they were sent to Berlin Memorial and Berlin Memorial, because the school was closed, was only picking up their mail periodically. So what we determined and in some cases assumed here was that the buildings were not open to drop these applications off at the deadline. And, um, the applicant hadn't planned on having to use the postal system to get them in. So we discussed these, um, the committee reconvened and discussed these applications and whether they should be considered, given the circumstances of the pandemic. Basically, we, we felt that the committee decided that these were unusual, this was an unusual year and applicants had faced a surprise at, at the deadline. And so we contacted Badit and Dewey and asked if we could still award additional scholarships. And we were told that we could, but those funds would need to come from next year's funding. So the committee evaluated the, the applicant, three applications and is recommending that each of these applicants receive a thousand dollar scholarship to be taken out of next year's scholarship monies, uh, but to be paid now. So we are asking the school committee to approve this additional round of scholarship grants. Happy to take any questions on that.
No questions, but congratulations to those individuals receiving those scholarships. That's excellent. And thank you very much to, um, yourself, the other committee members. And I apologize that I'm drawing a blank on the, the two members who always help us out in Moses Tyler Reed's call.
Yeah, Carol Young and Rich Mariani in Berlin.
Thank you.
If, if the committee votes to approve these, I would be happy to announce the recipients after the vote.
Okay. All right. Well, do we have a motion?
Um, a motion to award $3,000 to three additional, $1,000 each to three additional Moses Reed Tyler, Tyler Scholarship applicants.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Angela. All right. Uh, roll call Susan.
I.
Angela?
I.
Keith?
I.
Lori?
I.
It's an I for me as well.
Okay. The, I, I did submit a congratulations announcement to the Berlin Facebook page with the first round of applicants. So I, I would like to just announce these three then who just received these awards. The first is Allison Fleming, who was a previous and continuing scholarship award recipient. Matthew Sousa, who is a recent Tohato graduate. And Dylan Klemmer, who's a recent Assabett Valley graduate. So we're happy, we're happy to support their next steps in their education.
Thank you. Uh, okay, item F. Is the approval of the next session, next batch of our school committee meeting dates for 2022.
I think that doesn't include this Friday's meeting date, does it?
Does not, because that was recently added.
So let's just amend that to include the August 7th meeting at 6:30 it is, right?
I'll do for six o'clock.
Six, six o'clock on that Friday?
Yes. The town hall meeting on Thursday is six o'clock as well as the meeting on Friday.
Ah, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I'm totally mixed up on that. Are we ready for our motion?
Yep.
Okay, a motion to approve the, um, 2020, right, 2022? What is that? 2021 dates are, isn't it on the agenda? It says dates for 2022?
2021, right, Christie?
Little framework there, sorry.
Little typo.
Pandemic. Meeting dates for 2021, motion to approve the, the meeting dates for 2021 with the amendment of adding August 7th to the list, 6 p.m.
I second that.
Okay, thank you. Roll call Susan.
I.
Angela?
I.
Keith?
I.
Lori?
I.
An I for me as well. But in the last item, item G is the approval of the donation of a softball shed to be placed on Tohato property. Which is pretty cool. We have a boy scout in town that will be as part of his, I always get confused around the boy scout stuff, but I believe it's his Eagle Scout project. That'll be building a shed that'll be donated to Tohato to be used for storage of softball equipment.
Cool. That's great. Um, motion to approve the donation of.
Real quick, Diane, Diane, who, can you, I don't have it in front of me. I was just trying to find it. What's the name of the student who's donating that?
I can comment.
Did someone, I'm sorry, did someone just say the name?
This is Christie Still. If you'll allow me to, I can comment. It's Jack Stoffel who is putting that, who's putting that shed together and hopefully on the property in the next few weeks. I'm his mentor.
Awesome. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Come on. I just wanted to make sure Jack's, I, Jack was, we recognized him. I didn't want to just say a student. I apologize. I didn't have it in front of me. But that's awesome and that's so cool. I drive, I drive by, I want to see that softball equipment getting put away.
Jack's a great kid. I used to teach him. He's awesome.
Thank you very much. Okay, do I have a motion?
Uh, yes, Susan, uh, motion to approve the donation of the softball shed for Tohato.
I second that.
All right, roll call Susan.
I.
Angela?
I.
Keith?
I.
Lori?
I.
I'm an I as well. And that concludes our business items, future agenda items. We have in our agenda August 18th listed here as if needed, but I think in a previous school committee meeting, we talked about, we, we want to have that, obviously with everything, the, the, everything moving around. We decided we, we want to have that meeting, correct?
I agree.
On the 18th, yep.
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right. Just wanted to confirm. I appreciate that. Okay. The school committee will now be going into, that concludes our standard agenda. The school committee will be going into an executive session. And what I need now, and Christie, just, I always get this part wrong. We will be going into executive session to discuss a strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Berlin Boyles and Educated Association, and not to reconvene in open session, correct? Because.
That is correct.
We're not voting on anything, correct?
We are not tonight.
Okay. Could I please have a motion to adjourn the Berlin Boyles and Regional Transition School Committee with the intent to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Berlin Boyles and Educated Association and not to reconvene in open session?
I'll give you that motion.
All right. Thank you very much. We need a roll call vote. Susan?
I.
Angela?
I.
Keith?
I.
Lori?
I.
I'm an I as well. School committee, you have in your email inbox a different link for a different Zoom meeting for us to, for our executive session.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.